Hi, everybody. I just hit record and I can walk us through the rules of public participation. Okay, give me a second to just pull it up. How's that? Is that okay?
Yes, we can see it. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to everybody joining us in person and online. We really appreciate your participation tonight. And I just wanted to start out by sharing that the city has engaged with community members to create this vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations that I will go through. But just want everybody to know that this vision really supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and board commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. And we have much more information about this vision and how it was developed on our website. And the following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. And these will all be upheld during this meeting. First, all remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. And participants in open comment and public hearing are required to identify themselves using first and last name. If you're not sure if that's, if we can say your first and last name, or it's definitely not, you don't know how to change it, you can right-click on your name, or you can use the Q and A function on the Zoom platform to send me your full name, and I'm happy to change it for you. And just a reminder that the Q and A function was really only meant to address technical issues in the Zoom platform and not to discuss any matters of content. So to let us know you want to speak, you raise your virtual hand at the, at the moment when we open up the Florida Public Participation. And you can do that by finding the raise hand icon on the bottom of your screen. If you're joining us by phone, you can raise your virtual hand by using star nine. And you can also get to this raise hand by going to the reactions emoji. So Chair, if it's okay, I think we can move to open comment.
Yeah, thank you. So this is a public comment for anything besides the public hearing items.
Correct. And do you want to just state what the public hearing items are?
Yeah, the, the public hearing item this evening is for the 55-foot-tall structure on the LUR 2023-00046. I'll read the whole thing when we get into it.
Great. And just so everybody is on the same page, we will have an opportunity for public testimony after the presentations. So this part of the meeting is for any other matters that are not related to that public hearing. And each person would have three minutes to address the planning board, and I'll just give folks a few minutes to see if anybody would like to speak now. Otherwise, I think people might be here for, for the later public hearing. Okay, we have no hands raised. Oh, we have one. And Lynn Segal, please go ahead. You have three minutes. Please watch the timer.
Yeah, I was at the Boulder Valley Camp Plan initiation gathering this week, and I couldn't find any sustainability folks there or anyone concerned with water. All of these developments, CU South, Area Three, Alpine Balsam. I'll talk about the St. Julian later, but you know, the development at Waterview, was Waterview, now Weathervein. The Papelios at Folsom and Pearl. It's on and on. The Hyundai Development is going to be there, the North, the Geographic Geological Society of America project, the Mackenzie Junction, 30th and Pearl. All of this cannot handle, the water that we have from the Colorado River cannot handle all of this. You have to stop. You can't be giving developers subsidies without assessing them the impact fees of what they're doing until you realize later that whoops, we have no water to support all of this development. That we have no, you know, also part recreational centers like South Boulder Rec Center. Oh, well, the neighbors down there are pretty upset that now, after all these years, they're not going to have a rec center. It's, it goes the opposite direction. You have more people in South Boulder, and you're going to have even more with CU South. And with Alpine Balsam, you're going to have much more demand for the North Boulder Rec Center. So what do you want? People commuting from South Boulder to the North Boulder Rec Center or the East Boulder Rec Center? And then you've got carbon footprint. And everything, everything with car, associated with carbon footprint is based on water. Water is life. It's everything. Data centers, tech centers, you know, health, sciences industry that's going all big in Boulder from CU. All of this stuff requires water. And you've got to consider this. So get someone from RAB as ex officio on this board. Because this is just not okay that these, all these projects are moving forward with no infrastructure for them. In the future, we will have less rec centers, less police, less ability to take care of the people that you've overpopulated the whole place with. Done.
Thank you, Lynn Segal, for joining us. There are no other hands raised. Back over to you, George.
Thanks, Vivian. Okay, we don't have any minutes this evening to go through, nor do we have any dispositions, call-ups, or continuations. So we're going to go right into our public hearing item. And the public hearing is for a public hearing and consideration of a site review amendment for approximately 55-foot-tall structure with 50,069 square feet of floor area with a first-floor meeting space, mechanical mezzanine, and upper-level hotel rooms connected to the existing St. Julian Hotel at 900 Walnut Street, reviewed under case number LUR 2023-00046. Before I hand it over to staff, I just want to, since we have so many people participating in the room, I want to sort of set the table of what our process is. So first, staff is going to give their presentation, and there are going to be some follow-up questions from the board for clarifications. Then the applicant will have time to give their presentation. Then the board will ask questions of the applicant, if they have any. Then we will have most likely a break, a short one, just a little bio break. And then we'll have public participation. Right now, in person, we have 24, 25 people signed up. So when we get over 15 people, we have the time allotted for each individual at two minutes. So if you want to think about your presentations during that, during this time, to make sure you get out the points that you want to. And then finally, after the public participation, the applicant will have a chance to respond, as well as staff. And then we'll go into a bit of deliberation and comments and direction from the board. So that's the process, and I'll hand it over to staff for their presentation.
All right. Good evening, board. Is everyone able to hear me okay? Great. All right. My name is Shannon Moller, and I am with the City of Boulder Development Review Staff. And I'll be presenting a brief overview of the 900 Walnut Site Review Amendment for you tonight. So we're going to be looking at the planning process to date, the site history and context, a summary of the proposed project, key issues for discussion, and concluding with the staff recommendation. So the proposal is a site review. The proposal is a site review, amending the existing site review on the property that was approved under SI 199912. The proposal was reviewed by the Design Advisory Board back in December 2023, who provided feedback on the design, and then was reviewed by the Boulder Urban Renewal Authority in September of this year for consistency with the Ninth and Canyon Urban Renewal Plan Guidelines, Section 3C and D. So the board tonight is considering this amendment to the existing site review on the property. The existing site review approved Phase One for the existing underground parking garage and the St. Julian Hotel, and set aside the area known as the Civic Use Pad for future development as Phase Two. Modifications are being requested tonight, including to height and the number of stories and setbacks. The proposal includes or requires a decision by the planning board due to the proposed height modification and because the applicant is seeking vested rights. So the site was posted and public notification provided per code. Written public comments were received on this item, which were included concerns regarding the proposed height, size of the building, blocking views from the adjacent building to the east, traffic and parking concerns, the use of the building, among other items. And the written public comments were included in the board's packet. So next, we'll move to the site context and history. So here you can see the subject property as it exists today. It's a 2.71-acre site located north of Canyon, south of Walnut, and east of Ninth Street. It was developed as an existing 656-space caged underground parking garage in the existing St. Julian Hotel in the early 2000s. As part of that approval, a pad east of the hotel was constructed with a concrete structural deck designed to support a future building, which is the location of the subject proposal tonight. Subsequently, a site review amendment was approved in 2001 for a 55-foot-tall building for a children's museum and dance facility, but that structure was not constructed due to financial challenges. Here you can see outlined in white the public access easement, known as the 10th Street Pedestrian Easement. This was dedicated through the site review to connect the civic area to the south with downtown to the north. And here's a photo of the subject location. So I'll provide some property history going back to the establishment of the Ninth and Canyon Urban Renewal Plan, which was an important document that guided development of the property. When the Ninth and Canyon Urban Renewal Plan was originally established in 1988, the site was largely consisted of surface parking and was in need of infrastructure improvements. The purposes of the Urban Renewal Plan included implementing the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, eliminating existing conditions in the area that were detrimental, redeveloping, redeveloping and rehabilitating the area and effectively utilizing underdeveloped land. This plan was again adopted in 1988, and it was later amended in 1995 and in 2015. Here you can see an aerial photo of the site from 1999 prior to redevelopment of the site. So in 2000, a site review application was approved for the St. Julian Hotel and the Caged Parking Garage. These improvements again were considered Phase One. Incorporated into the project design was that pad east of the hotel that was a concrete structural deck designed to support a future building for Phase Two. Concurrent with that site review was a use review that was approved for the use of that future building as an indoor amusement establishment for the Village Arts Coalition, which was planning to use the building for dance and music performances. The design of that Phase Two building had not yet been completed, so a future site review amendment was required for the design of that building. So then subsequently, in 2001, the site review amendment was approved for the 55-foot-tall building for a children's museum and community dance facility. Due to financial challenges, this building was not constructed. So the St. Julian Hotel and the Caged Underground Parking Garage were completed in the early 2000s. St. Julian Partners and Caged entered into a condominium association and agreements regarding the use and maintenance of the property. The 1995 Urban Renewal Plan anticipated an opportunity for a civic use on the pad in the southeast corner of the hotel site. The pad is owned by St. Julian Partners, and agreements anticipated that the pad would be leased to civic uses for a 35-year term. The right to lease the civic use pad was agreed to expire January 1st, 2020. After such time, unless the city and St. Julian entered into further agreements, the civic use requirement would end. Over the years, there were numerous efforts to get a civic user to take advantage of the site, but these attempts were unsuccessful to identify a viable user. There were four different task forces that sought various approaches to achieve a civic use. In 2009, the Fourth Civic Task Use, Civic Use Task Force was appointed with the charge to provide recommendations to city council regarding the use of the site. The task force conducted a comprehensive investigation of challenges, options, and possibilities presented by the civic use requirement based on the feedback. The task force concluded that a single civic user concept was unrealistic, given the size, character, and financial resources. The 20% minimum required building space for a civic use entity was too much for any one user to afford, and the Urban Renewal Plan would need to be modified to meet the realities and needs of a development proposal. The task force also recommended a public-private partnership with the St. Julian to help achieve a successful result. Based on this feedback in 2013, a design concept was commissioned by the city with participation by St. Julian Partners, and included a building with a first-floor multi-use civic use space, a rooftop terrace, and additional hotel facilities in the upper levels connected to the hotel. In January 2014, this concept was supported by city council at a study session. It was later determined that the proposed rooftop deck was not viable due to height constraints. In 2015, city council updated the Ninth and Canyon Urban Renewal Plan in order to facilitate implementation of the civic use on the site by providing greater flexibility in implementation of the use. The ordinance updated the Urban Renewal Plan to state that civic uses will occupy up to 20% of the gross floor area pursuant to a plan agreement or other arrangement approved by the city. And the implementation of the plan would result in a floor-area ratio consistent with zoning. The city and St. Julian Partners also entered into a letter of intent specifying next steps. Then in 2019, city council authorized the city manager to enter into a management and operating agreement between the city, Caged, and St. Julian Partners concerning the use of the facility. The agreement contained conceptual images and information regarding the operating characteristics of the space. The agreement ensured that a multipurpose civic use space would remain part of the proposal rather than the civic use requirement expiring on January 1st, 2020. The proposed site review amendment tonight seeks to develop the space consistent with this 2019 agreement. So moving back to the current day, we'll take a look at the broader context. The property is located in the highest intensity area of downtown and adjacent to Canyon Boulevard, a major thoroughfare through the city. The area has experienced significant redevelopment over the last few decades and includes a mix of uses in the area. South of the site is the Civic Center area, which includes Boulder Creek, the multi-use path in the building we're in now. East of the site is the four-story, 55-foot-tall, approximately 78-foot-thousand-a-ret building. The site review for this building was approved in 2006, and because it was known that future development was anticipated on the subject property, consistent with the Urban Renewal Plan, the applicant was required to record a declaration of use to notify future purchasers that land use plans for the subject property are subject to an urban renewal plan with the potential for development with buildings up to 55 feet in height. Also nearby, to the north and northeast of the site, along Walnut, a mix of building sizes, uses, and heights exist, ranging from one to four stories, including uses such as restaurant, retail, office, and financial. Many of the buildings are four stories in height and between 48 and 55 feet tall, including those noted on this slide. The project site and much of the surrounding area is located in the 100-year floodplain of Boulder Creek. Portions are also in the high hazard and conveyance zones. Flood restrictions and necessary improvements were part of the design of the existing site. The flood restrictions require non-residential buildings to be floodproofed and hotel rooms to be elevated above flood protection elevations. Floodproofing requirements have been incorporated into the design of the proposed structure. The site is located in the central area of downtown, near numerous businesses offering shopping, dining, and daily needs that can be accessed on foot. The site is also located near multiple transit lines, including the Hop, Skip, Dash, among others, and is located about 1,500 feet from the downtown Boulder Transit Station at 14th and Canyon. Here you can see the existing bike lane along Ninth Street and the existing on-street bike route along Walnut Street. A pedestrian-activated crosswalk is also located just south of the site. Whoops, excuse me. Go back. The Transportation Master Plan Connections Plan calls for an off-street path through the site, known as the 10th Street Pedestrian Corridor, which is shown in the yellow dash line. We'll talk more about that with the design of the site. The Transportation Master Plan Connections Plan also notes a two-way protected bike lane along Canyon Boulevard. In review of the subject proposal, staff found that the site is already appropriately served by existing off-street bike infrastructure paralleling this proposed lane, and significant alterations to existing infrastructure and trelan would be required to install additional on-street bike infrastructure, which wouldn't be commensurate with the impact of the subject proposal and wouldn't be recommended in this context due to lack of adjacent bike connections on neighboring properties. The site also contains existing bike racks that will be updated to meet current standards. There is also a lime scooter grove at the southwest corner of the site at Ninth and Canyon. In terms of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, the site is located in the RB Regional Business Land Use in downtown, where the highest intensity development is anticipated to occur. The project site is zoned Downtown 5, DT 5, which is the business area within the downtown core in the process of changing to higher-intensity use and the area with the greatest potential for redevelopment within the downtown core. Hotel uses, including lodging and meeting rooms, are permitted by right in this zone district. The proposal is located in the nonhistoric area of the Downtown Urban Design Guidelines. So it is subject to those relevant guidelines. And again, the sites within the Ninth and Canyon Urban Renewal Plan. So we'll touch on these guidelines further on in the key issues. So next, we'll move to a summary of the proposed project. Here you can see that the proposal does include a new structure of approximately 50,000 square feet of floor area, contains a first-floor meeting space with connections to the lower-level parking garage, a mechanical mezzanine, and three levels of hotel rooms with an upper-level connection to the existing hotel. The structure is located just east of the 10th Street Pedestrian Corridor, a key design feature through the site that allows for pedestrian access through the subject property and connects the civic area to downtown. The proposed main building entry is designed to face onto the 10th Street Pedestrian Corridor and toward the existing hotel and onsite open spaces. The corridor is proposed to be enhanced with new wayfinding signage, lighting, decorative arches, and landscape planters. Visitors arriving by vehicle can park in the below-grade parking garage and proceed upstairs or in elevator. Or they may be dropped off at the existing vehicle turnaround at the north end of the St. Julian Hotel and proceed through the building, which will be jointly managed. Guests arriving via bicycle will be able to use existing and new bike parking. And vehicle access in the alley is intended to be limited to deliveries and trash recycling service, as is typical in the downtown area. The applicant has provided this circulation diagram, as well as a TDM plan, trip generation report, and alley management plan in their application materials. Moving to transportation and TDM, the proposal incorporates new onsite bike parking, including short and long term to meet or exceed current code requirements. In terms of TDM, the applicant has encouraged the use of alternate transportation modes. The site is located in the downtown area where many opportunities exist for the use of alternate modes, including numerous transit stops, bike pedestrian facilities, and nearby businesses. The applicant's TDM plan does include eco-passes provided through Caged for employees, short and long-term bicycle parking, provision of learner e-bikes and traditional bikes for hotel guests, a shuttle provided for hotel guests within a two-mile radius, and locker rooms and changing facilities provided for employees. The proposal will continue to provide the expansive area of open space at the corner of Walnut and Canyon, consistent with the Ninth and Canyon Urban Renewal Plan, which called for open space to be oriented to the south, take advantage of views, and incorporate floodplain conditions. This space includes a mix of landscaped areas with mature trees and shrubs, decorative hardscape walking paths, outdoor seating and dining served by the hotel. The proposal also includes new upper-level balconies for hotel rooms and new landscaping along the building and along the 10th Street Pedestrian Corridor as planters. Here you can see the proposed building design. It incorporates traditional elements into the proposed design, including a defined bottom, middle, and top, and maintaining the distinction between the ground and upper floors. The ground floor along Canyon uses sandstone ledgestone with large expanses of glazing, and upper floors are distinguished through the use of lighter appearing materials such as limestone panels. A facade rhythm is established through the use of columns and pilasters. The height mass scale of the building is similar to adjacent buildings along Canyon. Both the adjacent existing structures of the St. Julian and the Eret Building to the east were approved at a height of up to 55 feet and are four stories in height. The proposed structure will be just under 55 feet and will appear as four stories on the front facade, although there is an internal mechanical mezzanine level that's tucked inside the structure, which is considered a fifth story. The proposed structure is located at a similar setback to the Eret Building and provides relief in the facade, excuse me, through its rhythm of bays, areas of balconies, a rounded entry feature, and elevated walkway and skybridge. The rear north facade is also designed to clearly distinguish publicly accessible areas from service areas. The existing entrance down to this, down to the caged parking garage will be incorporated into the building design and enhanced with, as a clear pedestrian access point with wayfinding signage and lighting. And service areas are integrated into the design of the alley facade, including egress doors and additional screened trash and recycling storage. The design of the 10th Street Pedestrian Corridor is an important element of the overall proposal. The corridor will extend under the proposed upper-level skybridge. It will be visually defined by the proposed structure and enhanced with new signage, lighting, decorative arches, planters, and nearby bike parking. And it will have a ground-level building design with backlit perforated metal and lighting washing the walls underneath the skybridge. An additional 99-square-foot area of public access easement is proposed to be dedicated as part of the corridor, while an approximately four-square-foot area is proposed to be vacated to accommodate one structural column. The proposal does include modifications to the land use code, which I'll go through next. The proposal is requesting a height modification. It is eligible under criterion VIII for proposals seeking a height bonus for a fourth or fifth story. The applicant can choose to pay additional affordable housing capital facility impact fees at a rate above the base requirement for this bonus floor area, or the applicant can propose an alternative method of compliance through provision of a community benefit objective of a, through provision of a community benefit objective of the BVCP that is a value equivalent or greater than the benefits required through the additional impact fee. Staff estimates the total additional impact fee that would typically be required would be about $80,000. The applicant has provided a summary of the proposal's benefit to the community as a multipurpose meeting and event space in downtown that provides for below-market meaning space and first right to reserve the space by community not-for-profit and civic groups, consistent with the 2019 agreement between the city, Caged, and St. Julian Partners, and provided information that the total benefit would be in excess of $638,000 at year one. Based on this information, staff found the proposal consistent with the policy objectives of the BVCP to provide community gathering space and facilities for the nonprofit community and that the amount exceeds the amount required through payment of additional impact fees. The site review criteria also were updated in 2023 to include criteria for buildings requiring, requesting a height modification. The proposal has been designed to comply with these, and staff found the proposal compatible with the height mass scale as outlined in the Downtown Urban Design Guidelines and the Ninth and Canyon Urban Renewal Plan, and with that of the surrounding area. And it meets the requirements for providing open and gathering space. the requirements for providing open and gathering spaces on the site. The proposal also includes a modification to the number of stories. It's a five-story building is requested where two stories are typically permitted in the Downtown Five zoning district. The applicant has also requested setback modifications. The first is a setback modification to the center line of Canyon Boulevard. A 65-foot setback is required, and the applicant has proposed 63 feet, consistent with the building to the east. The applicant has also proposed a six-foot interior sideyard setback for the upper three stories of the building. The ground level may be set back to zero or 12 feet on this side, and upper stories may be set back to either zero foot, five foot, 12 foot or more, or the distance required by the building code. This proposal provides a zero-foot sideyard setback at stories one and two, permitted by right and typically seen throughout downtown. The proposal pulls back the closest point of stories three, four, and five to six feet in order to provide for increased space from the building to the east, and the majority of the upper stories is set back even farther because the six-foot proposed setback distance is not either zero, 12-foot or greater, five, or the minimum required by the building code. That's why the modification request is required. So that concludes the summary of the project. I'll briefly touch on key issues. So the first key issue is if the proposed project meets the site review criteria in the land use code. As noted earlier in the presentation, staff found the requested modifications to height, the number of stories, and setbacks did meet the associated review criteria, and overall staff found the proposal consistent with the review criteria, including the underlying BVCP land use designation of regional business and with many policies in the BVCP supporting the role of the central area, a compact development pattern, and the design of the proposal. Moving to key issue two, staff found the proposal was consistent with relevant design guidelines for the site, including the Downtown Urban Design Guidelines and the Urban Renewal Plan Guidelines, Section 3C and 3D. The proposal was reviewed by the Design Advisory Board in December 2023, who provided helpful feedback, and the proposal was revised to simplify areas of the design and address the design of the building entry and public realm interface. A summary of the changes was provided in the applicant's plan set, so staff found the updated proposal was consistent with the applicable Downtown Urban Design Guidelines. The proposal was also reviewed for consistency with the Ninth and Canyon Urban Renewal Plan. The plan notes that Section 3C and Section 3D are to be applied in a site review process and that these guidelines are not intended to be a design checklist but to suggest the type and range of options to be considered. These include the context guidelines in Section 3C and the site development guidelines in Section 3D. The proposal was also reviewed by the Boulder Urban Renewal Authority in September 2024, who found the proposal consistent with these guidelines, and staff also found the proposal consistent with the guidelines. So with that, staff recommends a motion to approve the site review application, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, and thank you for a thorough presentation. Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, ML.
Thank you for that presentation. That was complete. The history, every review process, and where we're at today. Thank you very much. So I have a couple of questions. So I'm curious about the open space. It refers back to the original, so wouldn't the civic center as not being the hotel, wouldn't that require open space?
We look at properties on the overall site, so the overall property being one, they're all allowed to share that same open space.
So there's no requirement for anything that would be particular to the civic center and the way it might be used and serve a public purpose?
Yeah, the requirements are just based on the size of the site and how it can be used, so.
Okay, so in aggregate, okay. Next question. So there's a mechanical mezzanine, and then there is mechanical on the roof. So what's the purpose of having a mechanical mezzanine? I mean, five floors is... So I'm just curious, is to... You think it'd be either or?
Yeah, I would be happy to defer to the applicant so they could share more about the design of that.
No, I think your open space answer answered some of my other questions. I think there's one more. Oh, so in the proposed community benefit option, wasn't the civic use required by
Yes, there is the current agreement, the 2019 agreement, that outlines the terms of that space. Yes, that's right.
So how can it also be a community benefit if it's required?
Yeah, the code for site review doesn't exclude a separate agreement from also being requirement, so they're not exclusive of one another.
So they would have... I mean, the civic use would have had to be done regardless. We think of community benefit as being a benefit in addition to what the requirements are, and you're saying we...
Yeah, they can both exist. It would be up to the planning board's discretion as to whether or not you feel that that met that criterion.
Is that information in the criteria?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a look at that. Because it does expire, you know, that civic use being required by agreement, the community benefit, it expires in 20 years, right? The agreement that was written?
There's an ending.
So that's not a forever community benefit? It's only for 20 years?
That's correct.
And we are using it as the reason to get the height exemption?
Yeah, so they either have to provide a community benefit that the board agrees is equivalent or greater to the value of the affordable housing requirements, or they would need to pay the additional impact fee required.
Right. Yep. And would the value that was assigned to that community benefit, is that... I mean, clearly it's speculative because nobody's using it yet, and we don't know what the use would actually be. Was that provided by staff or was that provided by the applicant?
It was provided by the applicant, yeah. They provided those calculations and information within the written statement and could probably share more about how they came to that.
Perfect. Those are my questions. Thank you so much.
All right, Laura.
So I have a lot of questions, so maybe I'll take a few and then we'll pass the mic. So regarding the open space, following on ML's comments, I didn't see an analysis in the packet of how much open space is required for the site as a whole. I understand that Phase One and Phase Two go together in the site review. So are we saying that the open space that was constructed with Phase One was sufficient for both Phase One and Phase Two?
Yeah, it's just a percentage based on the size of the property, so it well exceeded the minimum requirement.
And does that... Do we have access to that analysis somewhere, those numbers of how much open space was required based on the square footage of the property?
I believe it's in the applicant's plan set. They have information in there that lists the minimum requirement and the amount that was provided.
Would staff be able to point us to which of the 900 pages that is? Thank you. You don't have to do it right now, but I'll keep going. So that 2019 agreement included a lot of terms about things like the discounted rate for the use of the nonprofits for the civic space and, you know, the anticipated uses of the facilities for nonprofit uses. Is all of that 2019 agreement, would that be memorialized in this site review amendment and it would be binding upon the applicant for the next 20 years?
The agreement would be the binding part. The site review is separate, and we're looking at the site review criteria in this site review, so we don't have purview over the 2019 agreement in this process.
But is that 2019 agreement binding if we approve this building? In terms of like, they offer a 50% discounted rate, and here's how they're going to manage it and how they're going to determine which organizations are eligible and...
Right, so the 20% requirement comes from the Urban Renewal Plan, and that is the purview over the city council. So the city council had decided that the 20% is met by the agreement in 2019. So that agreement in 2019 is binding on any development for the St. Julian and is in place until 20 years after the first certificate of occupancy.
Okay, and so all of the terms about how that space would be used and how it's going to be managed, those are all binding for 20 years?
How it's amended, how more nonprofits are added to the list, all of that remains binding.
Great, thank you. My next question is, you know, is there a current analysis or evidence of unmet demand for civic meeting room space? Given that, you know, we have a whole lot of new construction with the Hill Hotel and Alpine Balsam and the North Boulder Library, the JCC, has any current analysis been done of what kind of usage we can expect from this civic meeting space?
The most recent analysis I'm aware of would have taken place back when the Civic Use Task Force was evaluating things and around the time the agreement was entered into in 2019. As part of this process, we don't have purview over the uses on the site in terms of whether a use is allowed or not, if it's allowed by right.
Okay, thank you. And then after the 20-year agreement expires, 20 years from when the certificate of occupancy would be issued, then what happens?
I believe then it's just under the management of St. Julian Partners, and so they would just be renting it.
With no civic use required? Okay, so it would be basically market-rate rental space for meetings and events. Okay.
Right, at this time, I would remind the board, though, that the civic use has been decided by city council to meet that requirement. So today, we are looking at the site review criteria.
Okay, thank you. Okay, one more. The proposed rooftop deck, which is noted in the 2013 feasibility study and the 2015 letter of intent, contemplated an outdoor rooftop area available for use by community members and visitors through rental, and then exploration of when that space could be used for free. And in the presentation in the packet, it says that in 2018, a study session update provided to city council basically said that the previously proposed rooftop deck was not viable, and Shannon, you added a detail that I didn't catch in the packet, saying that it was not viable due to the height restrictions. Can you elaborate on that? Because we have a lot of buildings that do have rooftop decks as part of their open space. Why was this considered to be not viable?
The information I have is coming from that 2018 study session memo. It's not super detailed. My recollection was that it was due to height restrictions. If you have an elevator that goes to the top of the building, we take the height from the top of that space, and so in order to place an elevator up there, that would exceed the 55-foot height limit.
So it couldn't go on top of the proposed building, but we could potentially carve out some of that fifth floor for a rooftop deck that would not exceed the height requirements?
Yeah, I believe that's possible if it didn't exceed the height requirements. Yep.
Okay, thank you. I will pass the baton. I have more questions for later, though.
All right. We'll look down here first. Claudia or Mason? Claudia?
I was just gonna say that I think both ML and Laura have covered some of my big questions, so I will sit back and wait and see if anyone else reads these things.
I thought Kurt looks like he has some questions.
Yeah, thanks. I wanted to follow up on the discussion of the height modification, alternative compliance calculation, and its interaction with the civic use agreement, the 2019 agreement, whatever that's called. So the height modification is part of the site review approval. So I guess first of all, I just want to clarify that is within the purview of this approval, right? To look at the, basically, whether that meets the height modification, alternative compliance criteria?
Yes, the board would be able to determine whether or not it meets that. Yep.
Okay, and then it was a little unclear to me, though, whether... It sounded like there's been a history of allowing height modification, compliance via requirements that were already imposed, as is the case here, right? Because the 2019 agreement imposes the civic use requirement, which is how they're meeting the alternative compliance requirement. So I guess I'm not totally certain whether we can look at whether those can be separated or whether we have to consider them... Whether we can require additional, some sort of additional alternative compliance requirements in addition to the 2019, what's specified in the 2019 agreement, or if, because they overlap and history says we allow that to happen, that we can't really look at that? Sorry, I'm not being very clear in this question, but I guess the question is, can... To what degree can we examine that question of can they overlap or does it really... Does the alternative compliance really have to be an additional measure?
Right, so the standards for alternative community benefit are laid out in the code, and there's really only two criteria for whether or not you guys can choose if this civic use or if another community benefit may meet that criteria. So that being, will improve the facilities or services delivered to the city, or is in a value equivalent or greater to the benefits required by the subparagraph. It does not exempt something that may already be required by a different plan in the city. So you can take that into account, but I would just ask you all to look at the community benefit that they're offering and see if it meets either one of those criteria, as well as the comprehensive plan criteria for that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. My other question is about the alley. So the east-west portion of the alley is city right-of-way. Is that correct? And then the north-south section is an easement. Is that correct?
I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, it is also right-of-way. I can try to pull that up. Yeah.
Okay, oh, they're both right-of-way. Okay, great. And those are regulated... They're considered exactly the same as any other alley in terms of how they're regulated and so on. Okay, great. That is it for now. Thank you.
I'm gonna carry on with the legal questions, so.
My second.
Yeah, welcome. Okay, page 13 and page 285 and Shannon's presentation all referred to the declaration of use, acknowledgement, and requirement for the Eret. So is it true that not only the developers, but the subsequent owners of the condominiums, et cetera, at the Eret all have had to agree to that declaration of use and acknowledgement of, excuse me, of the possibility of a 55-foot building being built to their immediate west?
So my understanding is that the declaration was recorded on the property records? Correct me if I'm wrong, Shannon. So that would have come up in any title work that someone would have had when they purchased those units? So yes, those declarations would have been available. So yes, those declarations would have been available.
But not necessarily like, okay, you want to buy here as part of your contract, you're signing this acknowledgement? It might come up in the title work, but as a separate document or not? Do you know?
It would come up in the title work. I've seen title work for this property where it appears, it's listed there, and you would need to read your title work documents in order to read that document. It's not a separate, like, contract that you would sign.
Right, thank you. On page 158, the operating agreement that we've all been talking to, November 18th, 2019. So that agreement just barely kept the, by 40-some days, kept the whole civic use thing from expiring. Okay? And that agreement superseded any prior agreement? That, we had multiple agreements along the way, but that agreement is the agreement of record currently. And that supersedes all the other records, all the other agreements prior to that.
As it pertains to civic use, yes.
Yep, okay. Is there any recorded ownership by the city of any portion or interest in the civic pad?
The CAGID owns the condominium that is the underground parking garage. So, yep.
So CAGID owns beneath, like, from the surface of the concrete down?
Yeah, there's a condominium plat that shows the different areas, yeah.
Okay, you should have included that.
One more page!
Another, we would have gotten to 900 pretty quick there, I think. Okay, and then on page 162, in that agreement, under general conditions, little B and little C, so that agreement is adhered to under both the City of Boulder code and laws and the State of Colorado laws. And it says, is explicit that there is no third-party beneficiary. And the agreement is only between the city, CAGID, and the St. Julian. And there is no, there are no other parties as part of that agreement, other than those three. Just confirming that.
Yes, correct.
Okay, and does any prior development agreement give the city any rights? Or do we incur any rights that is not stated in that agreement?
So there might be other rights as far as easements that go along, but as far as the civic use, no, this is the current agreement.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all my questions, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. I'm just going to do one, and then I'll pass it down. Quick question, on the presentation that you gave, and it was in one of the first few slides where it showed this new building in between the ARET and the St. Julian. And in that elevation, what struck me as something different than the other two was this mechanical shielding that was put up there. Actually, I can see a little bit on the ARET. I guess that was my question, is it relates, were the requirements different when those buildings were built? As it relates to the mechanical space above the 55-foot limit?
Not that I'm aware of. The only requirement I'm aware of now that we've seen taller mechanical screening be necessary is our energy code that has increased the height of mechanical units on the rooftop. So sometimes we were seeing taller screening on the rooftop. But I don't believe the screening requirements were different at that time.
So maybe similar, and I guess we'll ask the applicant whether they address it in their presentation or not. I'm curious to know what's different about the massive St. Julian and not having any mechanical on the roof, at least as it appears in this elevation versus the new building that's proposed? So I can table that. And I think, Mason, do you have some questions?
Yes. Is there, going to the civic use, is there any mechanism to notify nonprofits that the subsidy is available, sir?
I'm not familiar with how, any notifications or anything of that nature, so.
Okay, and then on the floodplain, I was trying to follow it through the document, but just to confirm the separation elements between St. Julian and this new building have been demonstrated? Substantive improvement wasn't triggered, which would require?
Yes, the applicant provided information, I believe in the written statement, to resolve the, you know, questions about what needs to be done to the building regarding flood, so.
Yeah, so I guess I can ask them more about the proposed dry floodproofing and all that. Does it impact the, does it trigger anything with the garage underneath?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, that's all my remaining questions.
I'll go to Claudia and then back to Laura.
Okay, hopefully a quick one here. I have a question about the management and operating agreement from 2019. That agreement describes a city subsidy that could be available as part of this agreement to nonprofit groups using the space. Do those, let's see, yeah, how do we frame this question? Does that, it talks about that being an optional subsidy program. And I'm curious if that subsidy is kind of stacked on top of the discounted rates that are part of this agreement? That is, does it benefit the potential nonprofit users of the space? Or is that subsidy designed to compensate the St. Julian for reduced revenue that they may have from offering below-market space?
So the city subsidy is for any not-for-profit group. The process of that is, according to the agreement, as well as the letter of intent that was signed previous to the agreement, is going to be discussed once the civic use is underway, on how that subsidy is going to work. But it is for, I guess, is in addition to the reduced rents and everything else that's already kind of run the agreement?
Okay, so just to clarify that I have this straight. If I was a nonprofit group potentially renting under this regime, I would be paying, first off, that, you know, half price or whatever the discounted rate that the St. Julian has put in the agreement? And potentially, the city would then be reducing my rate further to use that space? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Shannon, I think I forgot to thank you for your presentation. Really well done, thank you, very informative, as always. The 10th Street pedestrian corridor, some concerns were expressed about it being, you know, near trash pickup and dumpsters. Can you walk us through what that, do you have visuals that show us what that pedestrian experience would be like going through that 10th Street corridor? And I also wanted to see, do we have an image of the entry court by the door of the new building? And then kind of walking us through what that corridor would look like from a pedestrian experience?
Yeah, these are some of the renderings the applicant team provided. So the one on the left is facing north when you walk up the steps from Canyon. And the one on the right would be facing south when you're just about to pass between the two structures. So currently, I think there was a number of concerns with the existing recycling facilities that are located in this corridor. Those would be removed as part of the development. So they would no longer be in the location they're in now. And it would basically appear as this. I can let the applicant describe more about the design.
Okay, because I think some of the concern was about what is immediately to the east of this south-facing view, right? Like, you're going into the corridor, but you're coming basically through an alley. And then off to your left is a bunch of bays that have, you know, dumpsters and recycling and maybe trash trucks and things like that going through.
Let me look, see if I can find. I don't know if you can see my mouse. So on this, are you speaking regarding like the alley elevation of the proposed building?
I think so, that north slash alley elevation. Okay, so if I understand it correctly, all the way to the west is the corridor. And then immediately to the east of that is the stairway down into the parking garage. And then to the east of that is where these trash and recycling facilities are. Is that correct?
Yeah, here, if, oh, I'm not sure what's showing my mouse, there it goes. Yeah, so the corridor would be located here. The entry to the parking garage is this door here that folks can use to get down into the CAGID garage. This is a egress door service access. And then there's a screened trash and recycling additional facility in this location here.
So you say screened, so there wouldn't be, like, open dumpsters on the alley in that position?
No, it's required to be screened and it's kind of within the building footprint in that location.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. And then this pedestrian corridor, is it usable by bikes and wheelchairs? I couldn't quite tell if there were ramps, because there are stairs at that end going down onto Canyon.
Yeah, you can see, I think you can see here, this is an existing ADA ramp. So you'd want to use that for wheelchair and bike access. This is the existing staircase.
Okay, so you can get into that ramp from the street, from Canyon, basically where that corridor is? Okay, great, that's helpful, I'm sorry, I'm bad at reading diagrams. Thank you. Another question, in the Ninth and Canyon Urban Renewal Plan, which I know is not a binding document, it's not, you know, you don't have to meet every detail of it. But in that document, it talked about having an onsite transit center or stop integrated with the sidewalk and the buildings to facilitate transit access. And it looks like that is not part of the current plan. Can you talk a little bit more about why that idea was, did not make it?
Yeah, my recollection was when the earlier proposal was proposed to be a children's museum, there was a design that incorporated a bus drop-off on Canyon. And there was a drop-off pickup area. That was the only extent that any type of onsite transit facility was ever proposed. With this design, you know, there is no proposal for a bus drop-off or pickup as part of the design.
And it's just felt to be not needed, or?
I think so, there's a number of other bus and transit facilities right in this area. So that was my understanding.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question, there was a suggestion by one public commenter that on those extended-stay rooms that are being added to this, you know, above the civic use facility, that some percentage of them be earmarked for low-income visitors or affordable housing units, consistent with the 25% requirement in the Boulder Inclusionary Housing Program, which I know applies to residential units, not to hotel rooms. But was anything like that considered for community benefit? Was there any conversation around some of those hotel rooms having community benefit?
No, not to my knowledge. All hotel rooms, even if they're quote-unquote extended-stay, would need to follow our hotel room use requirements, which is a maximum of 30-days stay. So they're not intended to be like a long-term stay environment. But no, it wasn't, it wasn't discussed as a community benefit-type option.
Okay, thank you.
One more question, following up on Laura's question about the ramp on the south side off of Canyon. Does that current ramp meet our code, our current code?
For ADA requirements?
Yeah, for ADA, and this is designated in the TMP as a multi-use path, isn't it?
Not in this location, no. The yellow line that went through the site was an off-street pedestrian path, if I recall correctly.
Okay.
But yeah, I would defer to the applicant on the slope of that, the exact slope of that ramp.
Yeah, I'm wondering about both the slope and then the radius, because on a bike, going up that ramp, you really can't get around there without picking up your bike. So I guess there was no, the upshot is there was no trigger requiring upgrading of that facility, is that correct?
The, like, to add a ramp where people could bike across Canyon up through this area?
Well, to upgrade specifically that ramp that is next to the stairs there, just, since there's new construction, sometimes that triggers a requirement to upgrade the onsite facilities, right? And so I just, I wanted to see if there was any requirement that this, and I'm specifically calling out the ramp, because that's the part that I've experienced that seems to be problematic. There's, but there was no, there was no trigger requiring upgrading that facility?
Not that I'm aware of. It is shown as an accessible route on this diagram. So I would defer to the applicant if they can tell us a little more about the slope there and if that does meet slope requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else before we go to the applicant? Claudia?
One more here. In the absence of a Phase 2 building that we're considering tonight, what regulations and agreements have been governing the use of that concrete pad for the last 25 years?
There are agreements between CAGID and the St. Julian about various things. I'm not aware of anything specific that is governing the use of that right now.
Okay, and presumably, until we do approve some form of site review amendment, that same regime would continue into the future? Okay.
I did have an additional question. It's in regards to the structure that's proposed and the existing parking garage that supports it. I know the city is doing an evaluation of the city's parking garages relative to maintenance, et cetera. And when we talked about that, there was a point brought up around the mass of EVs and the fact that they are about twice to three times the weight, potentially, of ICE vehicles. And as we evaluate this proposal, has that been looked at for this garage and for supporting this structure? That there may be some new vehicles that might have a different weight? And is that, has that been factored in at all? Has anyone thought about that?
Yeah, I think the applicant could talk more about the structural requirements, because I know that was a major part of the design of the building, yeah.
Perfect, thank you. Other questions? Yeah?
Sorry, was staff able to locate that page that has the open space calculations?
Page 76 of the packet.
Thank you, Charles.
All right, with no further clarifying questions, thank you for taking us through that. And we'll shift over to the applicant's presentation. I don't think you've requested additional time, you have about 15 minutes to present. There's a button in this, right, yeah.
There we go. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, great. Hi, my name's Matt Cesari. I'm a principal at 4240 Architects, representing the applicant, St. Julian Partners. And just wanted to do a brief introduction. And also thank Shannon, the rest of the crew here, for presenting and all the questions that you've asked, because I think my job's gotten a little bit easier. So we've been working with Bruce on and off for actually probably 25 years, give or take, on the original St. Julian, which we're really proud of, and excited and honored to be able to present the annex. And excited and honored to be able to present the annex for the St. Julian as well. And we really believe that this will complete the vision that was started in the 1990s. So just thank everyone for this time here. And I apologize, I kinda have to look at all these at the same time. Okay, so this is an original rendering, if it's showing up. Okay. So this, uh, original rendering from this multi-decade history of the project, the St. Julian as an idea began in the 1990s through the Urban Renewal Plan and the grand opening was held in 2005. Since then, Jillian's, the spa, the bar, the lounge, even the meeting spaces have contributed not only as a hotel, but more importantly, essentially a living room for the community where people can gather for drinks to celebrate a special occasion where business deals can be had and people can treat this like a base camp as they venture off into the flat irons and beyond. Sorry, we're having technical difficulties here. Let's see if this works. I'm gonna try a different version here. I think that should work, apologize for that. It just keeps crashing on me. It could be Wi-Fi. One second, I apologize. Yeah, it didn't. And how, can you help me?
Well, the Wi-Fi's over here, is that what you're looking for?
I'm just trying to get back on to Zoom, it's totally closed down. Even if I need to, I can switch to my laptop.
So this is the internet again, so we have to open up the, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we have to open up Zoom, I'm assuming the internet's still on?
Sorry. Could we do it without Zoom?
Oh no, we can email the presentation.
Oh, okay. I don't know why it's... Sorry guys, we had all this figured out beforehand. No, it's, well, if you'd like a potty break, you can, uh, we just lost connection with Zoom. Sorry about that, guys. Um, I used the boardroom here, this one. Sorry.
Yeah.
When he's clicking the share screen, um... Do you want me to put the mouse on here? Do you have a mouse?
The mouse is, I, I don't need a mouse, it's working.
Hi, uh, it wasn't very easy to hear for those of us online. Um, so just letting everyone know that we'll resume around 7:20, just a short break.
Um, well, yeah, but I, I understand that, we need a proper flood proofing, it's just when they ask us about a little bit later. I, I won't have, I can't look it up now, what he's speaking, because all my stuff's on it. I'm just trying to look at what the requirements are and how we meet. We have good flood dates and we have the, yeah. And the original.
And all the windows and doors are red.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that was it, okay? Well, it does, I just don't know where, how do you share your screen?
Oh, okay.
Well, so, it looks like you were sharing it correctly, but then it was crashing.
Yeah.
Did you get that over there?
I sent it, it might take a little bit.
Okay. It is the, um, when we share screen, the internet keeps crashing. And so that's the, because we can see it here, but it's just not casting, so we just resume. Yeah, so trying to find a workaround, I'm sorry.
That's fine with me.
It might be better.
Okay.
Testing, Vivian, can you hear me?
Yes, you're back, audio, and we can also see the screen.
Great, thank you, we're gonna get started here again in just a minute.
Thanks.
All right, uh, we're gonna try this again, if everyone could, uh, have a seat. And I'll let the, why don't you start over, if you can introduce yourself? We also got some feedback from the audience while we were here, and feedback for the board and for everyone with mics, that there's, some of them are having a hard time hearing us, so if everyone could try to speak up into their mics, including the applicant, that would be great, appreciate it.
Sure, uh, thank you, sorry for the technical difficulties. My name's Matt Cesari, I am a principal at 4240 Architecture. And I'm gonna go through this beginning a little quicker to save everyone some time, but we've been working with Bruce and St. Julian Partners for about probably 25 years, give or take, on the original St. Julian, and really delighted to be here to be able to present the annex to complete the vision that was started in the 1990s. On this next slide, this is an original rendering from approximately 2002, uh, showing the existing hotel and the vision for, uh, creating the St. Julian and the Experience Beyond. So we want to get into this a little bit more by talking about St. Julian as an idea in the 1990s. Grand opening was in 2005, and this hotel is really a, uh, a, a living room for the Boulder community. And with this annex, we see it as an expansion of that looming living room, uh, idea with Jillian's, the spa, the bar, the lounge, the meeting rooms, et cetera, where people can share drinks and celebrate, where they can go to, uh, make a business deal happen. They can go to a conference, it can be a base, uh, sort of a base point, uh, for folks to go into the flat irons. And so, looking at this slide, this is really the, uh, site plan that Shannon showed a little bit earlier. Uh, the initial phase of the project also included public parking below grade to support the neighborhood, open space and a vision for a future civic use program that would further contribute to the community. The hotel parking and outdoor space was completed as part of Phase One. The civic use pad and pedestrian corridor was conceived to be completed in a later phase. While various civic concepts were discussed in design retreat sessions for years leading to the hotel groundbreaking, the Collage Children's Museum was a front runner at the time the pad structure was designed to accommodate the museum. With the, uh, with the museum subsequently withdrawing after unsuccessful efforts to engage the Boulder History Museum and/or the Village Arts Coalition to replace Collage, the civic pad was left dormant for many years. And I don't wanna, uh, elaborate too much on the timeline because Shannon's already done this, but there's been several iterations of this, really trying to bring this into fruition since 2001, all the way up until the present time. And then on this next one, what you'll see here is, uh, this is really focusing primarily on open space uh, in sort of mass form. But I did wanna take a moment to talk about the Boulder Creek Flood Lane. This will become a little bit more important, uh, later on in the presentation. That is what's on the lower left-hand corner. The garage is elevated four feet, uh, above to make sure that we're above the place, base flood elevation and it's flood-proofed. But I think another part about this, it's really accentuating what I indicated before, is when you look at the lower right-hand corner, this civic use building is really an extension of this idea of this living room. St. Julian's already part, uh, participating in this. And now we're trying to expand that to make this a great amenity for the community, as it were. Let's see here. Let's go to the next one here, so this was also another one that Shannon, uh, discussed earlier. And I don't wanna elaborate it upon it too much, but just really emphasize the fact that if you really look at this plan, Canyon Boulevard is this sort of east-west dividing line or stitch or zipper, if you will, between sort of the civic uses along the south, where it's more, I, I guess I'd call it landscaped or pastoral, for lack of a better term. And then the northern side of that, where this is really an urban-built edge, creating these outdoor rooms between the buildings in the streets and then towards the south. All of the buildings, uh, really create that great facade. And this is really completing that final portion of this, where the buildings vary from about 35 feet to 55 feet, four or five stories. It's, it's, it's menagerie, but there is a consistent height and, and urban edge to the master planning that is going on here. This is further accentuated, and we talked a little bit about this pedestrian path, but this pedestrian path, uh, continues even further north on Wal- Walnut, but continues through the site and then continues further down into the civic area. And this is simply showing the context that's around the site. We talked a little bit about the flood-proofing and we talked a little bit about the garage, and it's an existing garage, uh, that's a condominium through Caged, but one of the... and it's an existing garage, that's a condominium through Caged, but one of the interesting parts that we really had to work with here is working with the existing structure that has a 28-foot by 28-foot grid, and there are some limitations that we couldn't really work around, but we're pushing and pulling and getting creative without creating any real impact to the structure below, with the exception of an elevator pit, so there's a minor change in the floor slab above and some added beams, but the additional surplus load does not affect the structure in any negative way, because the structure was planned to be a children's museum that was already 55 feet tall. And then looking at this pedestrian easement, I think this is a really important one to enhance, so we've really been looking at how this connection, it's a little, it's sort of funny, these pedestrian passageways that we find in Boulder and other communities where the passage zigs and zags through, so it's coming from Walnut towards the right, or towards the east, and then jags over, which is, has always been the plan since 2000, and then it re-centers as it's crossing Kenyon Boulevard, and so we really played off of that idea to create an immersive experience, you can see the images on the right, they're just showing the gateways and the thresholds, and some really fun ideas about creating screens that perhaps we were looking at the mitzvah archway that's in Denver that some folks may be aware of, that was built, gosh, 125 years ago, but just something to celebrate the past, the present, and the future of Boulder and the citizens here. And these plans are just a reference, we've already talked a little bit about this, it's a 55,000-square-foot building, it is five stories, although it presents itself like four, this mezzanine, there's a question about the mezzanine, I'll answer that right now. What we were trying to do is, because of this civic use nature, it's very similar to the St. Julian, the St. Julian has a mezzanine at the second level, and that really serves the meeting spaces, there's large volumes of air, large volumes of people, and it really requires that. We went further, though, we didn't need all of this mezzanine, what we tried to do is bring some of that mechanical equipment down to that mezzanine from the roof to reduce the footprint, so we're well below the roof coverage requirements that are outlined per code. And then, maybe one other part that I want to reference here is the civic event spaces, about 6,500 square feet, and then there's supporting space largely in the north and especially on the east. Once we get to levels two, three, and four, those are all guestroom suites, they're 13 per level roughly, so 39 keys, if you will, or guestrooms, and then the rooftop above. This is a really important one to focus on here, this is the overall street elevation going from almost Ninth Avenue, or Ninth Street, sorry, to almost 12th. And what's really important here is to understand the scale, there was a question about the building appurtenances, the rooftop equipment, do apologize, we didn't articulate all of that's on the roof, but the St. Julian does have a four-pipe mechanical system with rooftop equipment, we could provide that, but it's somewhat similar in height to this. Shannon did make a good point with regard to the screening heights, the equipment, because it is getting more and more efficient, becomes more and more voluminous in many instances, sometimes it's really getting smaller, but in this one, we really need that screen height as, at that height, we'd love to keep it lower, it's one of those things that we can't control, but we did try to pull this back. I think the more important part with regard to this elevation is really how it stitches the ideas from the St. Julian with the ideas from the Eret, in a harmonious way, where we really truly have a base, a middle, and the top, and then because of certain zoning requirements here, we're really trying to step the building back. So what you'll see in this middle portion here is, it's about 87 feet, 10 inches wide, that is the portion that projects out the furthest, that is the most proud, it has the highest level of finishes, and then everything else steps back further and further as you go through the building, so we scrub something heavy, then we go lighter, and then the top is supposed to really dissolve as we're going through there. And getting a little bit more into the elevation, this is looking first at the south and the west elevation, so these are the primary pedestrian experiences that everyone will have, and so, again, it has a base, it has a middle, and it has a top, and one thing that I probably should have mentioned on the previous slide here is, when you look at the west side of the annex, we're really trying to create a bridge that is mediating between the St. Julian and between, and the annex, so it is set back, it's glassy, it's a little bit different in aesthetic, and it's trying to go away, and then we're lifting it up with an arch down below. The materials are really high-quality, Shannon mentioned earlier that we have leadstone, there's limestone, there's interlocking metal zinc paneling, there's curtain wall and storefront, all of this is on the front facade, but then we add another level of detail where we're getting into lighting, we're getting into armatures, we have canopies, we have planting and vegetation, which is really important, we have to be at this front edge, but we're really trying to set it back as much as we can to line along the Kenyon Boulevard sidewalk, all of this vegetation that's there, and then the vegetation that's on the southeast corner, if you will. And then there gets into metal steel channels, we have metal railings, we're looking at cornices and caps, and really trying to get that fine-grained level of detail that really is required in this public realm. And that's all pretty much in the south elevation, what we'll see when we're looking at the west elevation is that same basic composition along with the hanging balconies, and then as we transition towards the alley side, the materials still show through, but it does start to convert from some metal at the top to some stucco, especially as we turn the corner on the next page, so when we're looking at this north elevation, it's sort of a sister or cousin or sibling, if you will, to the south elevation, but it's downplayed a little bit, and it's softened, because what we're trying to do here is add even more vegetation, not only at grade, but also at levels two, three, and four, if you will, and so those become great planter boxes to soften that edge, and we have this frame built up primarily all of the same materials. Shannon mentioned the idea of the passageway that's further to the west, we have a garage access that is in the middle here, and then the service ingress to the east, and then, as we talked about earlier, the trash enclosure. Uniquely enough, the east elevation, we do this deliberately, but we have a blank facade, if you will, there's no fenestration, maybe is a better way to say that, and what we're trying to do here is respect the neighbors, because we are in close proximity, we're really trying to make sure that there's sort of a neighborly response there, and we don't have views going back and forth within a relatively close proximity here. Stepping to the next topic here, this is looking at the children's museum that Shannon showed a little bit earlier, and we just wanted to elaborate upon that without getting into too much detail, but this is showing the elevations of three sides and then the existing footprint, and the elevations that we really wanna focus on is really at the east elevation down below, what you'll see is that that eastern facade was built, or conceived to be built right on the property line, it was going to be blank, and there were going to be murals, but nothing else. And, and you can see how this is also 55 feet tall, it covers essentially the same expanse along the east property line, which I think is an important point to note, especially as we pivot to this next one, I don't wanna belabor this too, too much here, but there was this declaration of use that was provided and required, we're not quite sure what the builder, developer, owner did with that and how they communicated that to the residents, but you can see that initially, the facade was conceived as something that was a little bit simpler, flatter, cleaner, with very little fenestration. There was a request by the planning board at that time to figure out a way to articulate that more, not necessarily with balconies or windows, but what was conceived ultimately is, and what is in place here is on the lower right-hand corner, so it has high-quality materials and such, but it wasn't really taking into account this declaration of use. This one's a really important slide to think about when we're looking at the basic mass and form, but I think more importantly is looking at how this building sets back, not only on Kenyon Boulevard, but especially on the east facade. We don't have the calculations here today, but I think it's roughly about 3,200 square feet of area that was pulled back at each level, starting at level two on up, and we're pulling this back, as Shannon mentioned, about six feet at the minimum, and that's really at the scare core, and then we're pulling back more and more and more. We have a use by right to be able to go to the property line, but we think this is best for both parties, it really does create views, and earlier on at a design advisory board meeting, we did present views from the Eret, looking at the flat irons, and for the majority of those, they're still preserved until you get to the alley side. And then this is showing the overall site plan again, but this is-
Just to let you know, you have about a minute left, so I just wanted to-
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sure, great, thank you. This is really showing an emphasis with regard to site access and really loading and trash, so the primary hotel entry is still off of Walnut, and the guestrooms above can access there, the primary access to the civic use is on the southwest corner, the hotel loading and trash is all dedicated in this place, it is not going to have recycling bins outside, and then the four-yard waste bins that are located along the alley are solely for the civic use, and there is no cross, I guess, usage, if you will. So, this is where we are, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to some questions from the board, I may start one off and then have others chime in. A question for the applicant, you mentioned the idea in comparison with, you know, the children's museum that was approved at 55 feet, when you look at those plans, it had access from the public, it had a museum shop, it had other things where the public could engage with the building, and you talked about this being an extension of the, your words, it was, community gathering space, base camp, et cetera. What aspects of this building will be open to the public, and how will the public engage with it? Are there, are there spaces, like, like, I didn't see any in the plan, but I'm just kinda curious, if you can outline what the ground floor spaces are and how the public can engage with it, like, let's say the museum was kind of viewed, I think, as part of that, so, curious-
Sure.
Where your thoughts are.
I wanna get to the, I think this would, this plan here, I apologize for the audience, this is a smaller plan, but I think this does a good job. That civic use museum and Dance Studio was still something that you had to pay to enter, perhaps there were free days, I'm not sure, but that's a similar way that the hotel is operating, and a similar way that this civic use will operate, and so, it's really an open stage, so that could be, still be for dance, it could be for art galleries, it could be for conferences, meetings, dispute riddles, I mean, it can be anything for folks. When we're looking at the actual plan, and I wanna get back to a larger plan of this, when we're looking at this, what you'll see in sort of an off-yellow tone, if you will, is that civic use, or civic event space, and then along the north are restrooms, everything that's in blue and gray on the right is support space, so we have a catering kitchen, we have storage for chairs, things of that nature, but everything that is in sort of this off-yellow or cream color is really the civic portion of that, and everything else is supporting.
Okay, so there's nothing open to the public, except for if you wanna rent the facility and come into agreement with-
That's right.
Okay, got it. One other question, and this is kind of a macro question with the new hotels on the hill that have come up, and what you have going on at the St. Julian, I'm curious to understand if there are economic needs relative to this structure and the 39 keys, along with the additional conference space that are important to the hotel, because you've got new competitors entering the market and new product, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, but I'm just curious, as sort of a background, on why, why this is important, verse, just leaving it be, which is not a great idea either, but curious.
Sure, sure, I don't know if Bruce could answer this, as the architect, we don't deal with the financials.
Sure, of course.
Hi, Bruce Porcelli, managing member of the St. Julian Partners. Yeah, you know, the, we were always trying to comply with the civic use, and if I can just give a little historical background, is that when we bought the property in 1994, it was under the 1988 Urban Renewal Plan, and civic use wasn't actually an element. Interestingly, we took title in December of 94, and, and the city council had a study session in February of 95, and started talking about buying the property, land banking it, let's put in a civic use, even though what we're doing is actually the original intent of the 1988 Urban Renewal Plan, which was a hotel and conference center. So, as we went on, and actually before the Collage Children's Museum, there was, there was the Tea House, there was the Train Depot, there was a number of other uses that the, when we started getting close to construction drawings, the Collage Children's Museum was the frontrunner at the time, and so, the, well, the structure in the garage was built for the children's museum, and when they withdrew for various reasons, we all worked to try to get the, the history museum to take their interest, and they declined, they studied it, declined, Village Arts Coalition was a Dance Studio, they, they looked at it, then declined. It's not an easy thing for a civic building, because there's no fee simple interest in it, it's, it's a condominium association, and there's no, there's no long-term rights to it, per se. The, there's a, the Caged is a, the garage is a condominium unit, the St. Julian is a condominium unit, and the actual pad, getting back to one of the earlier questions, whether the city has any interest in it, the pad is actually a limited common element of the St. Julian condo unit, so the city interest or the Caged interest would be probably somewhere in the, below the airspace and/or the ceiling of the garage, getting, that's trying to go a long way around, kinda getting where we are, so, when, we all kept trying to do a civic use, and people, it started, people started talking about private uses, and well, you know, we'll, we'll have a private use, but part of the private use will, will give to a civic user or do something else, and we'd say, well, wait a minute, if there's gonna be private uses on this site, then, then we'll be the private use, and the, the meeting space, actually, if you think back, is always considered, it actually should've always been considered a civic use, because what the city wants is economic vitality, a vibrant downtown, and it's bringing in people to downtown. So with the hill, yeah, there is more space up on the hill, but if you talk to a lot of downtown business owners, they would say, what you're doing on the hill is great, but don't forget about downtown, downtown still needs, there's, there's low vacancy rates in the office buildings, there's restaurants still trying to reopen, it's, this, this extra meeting space, yeah, it actually, because this has been in the works since, since before the Hill properties were, were on the drawing board, but I think everyone feels like it still makes sense. In 2019, when the city council was approving this and signing the agreements, people were fairly excited, they said, this is great, and, you know, we thought, St. Julian did not let the clock expire and run out, we said, gee, thousands, literally thousands of man-hours, thousands of person-hours with all the civic use task forces, when, spent years, I think one of the, someone was quoted as saying it was 15 exhaustive years, actually, it was, it was more than 15 years, and to actually come up with something that had some element of civic use to it, I think people were happy that at least finally something was getting done. So, do we need it? It makes it more competitive, but does the town need it? Yeah, it actually helps downtown Boulder more than, more than having meeting space out in East Boulder, having meeting space up on the hill, I don't, even though to us it's not that far, I wouldn't, I wouldn't assume that everyone feels like, gee, well, gee, the hill, the hill and downtown Boulder is the same feel, it's not, there's gonna be a lot of people that wanna be downtown, and a lot of these-
I don't wanna, I don't wanna cut you off, but I just wanna give time for the board members to ask, I think you answered enough of my question, appreciate that. Go ahead.
I do have a follow-up question that's probably appropriate for you, I'm sorry, tell me your name again.
I'm sorry, me?
Your name again, please.
Bruce, Bruce Porcelli.
Thank you. In the applicant's statement, you estimate that half of the room would be rented, 75% on average each day for 70% of the year for events by nonprofits. So this equates to nonprofits spending about $1,350, and maybe there's some escalation there, because I think this estimate was from like 2013, but, you know, over $1,300 renting this space 255 days out of the year. Do you have, have you talked with nonprofits in Boulder and who have this level of interest that 255 days of the year nonprofits are gonna wanna spend over $1,300 to rent space?
Well, you know, early on, I'm sorry, early on, when we were having these surveys done in conjunction with the city- Well, you know, early on, I'm sorry, uh, early on, when we were having these surveys done in conjunction with the city or the downtown management commission, and we, we hosted meetings, we brought in as many nonprofits as we could. Josie Heath was involved, uh, with the community foundation and, and, uh, yeah, nobody was signing up saying, yeah, by the time you get built, we, we commit to this space or that space. But everyone felt like, yeah, there is demand, if, if you build it, we'll, we'll use it. But the using is, is, is the different sizes. These are not all hundred and fifty, three hundred person groups. A lot of nonprofits just want a room for twenty, thirty people. In fact, most of, even on our pro- for-profit side, most of our groups are less than a hundred people. And a lot of the, uh, when you say the space, the space is divisible. Some of the nonprofits, yeah, they, they meet in one room, but they eat in another or vice versa. And I want to bring up another element of the civicness to it because, and this is something that is not being done on the hill or other properties. But we, what we agreed to was for the nonprofits didn't have to, if they catered it, they didn't have to use St. Julian services. We have a list of, or we'll keep updating a list of, uh, of approved caterers. And that's, that's a big, it's a big deal. The fact that, uh, we can't, you know, any hotel, if you want food and beverage, you can't charge whatever you want. They can, they, it can be competitive and they can order catering from, from a, from a list of people. We just want to have some control and the city does as well so that the space doesn't become, uh, abused. But that shouldn't be underestimated too, the fact that, because that's how.
Oh, okay, thank you. I think, I think you've answered my question. But just, just to clarify, you think that two hundred fifty-five days of the year, you will have a nonprofit in that space, renting about half of that space or more?
Yeah, or on average, I mean, you could say there could be three groups in one day and one group in the next day. I mean, this is, this is trying to say not two hundred and fifty-five straight days, two hundred and fifty-five user days.
Okay, thank you.
Quick, couple of quick transportation questions. To date, have you ever run out of parking for an event?
Uh, the garage hasn't been, I know of, I mean, there's six.
Yeah, when I, when I say if you run out of parking, I'm including the cage, the multi-level cage garage, street. Have you ever said, oh, my gosh, we shouldn't have booked this event, we're having a.
Yeah, we have, you know, uh, we have what we call our valet spaces. And, yeah, when things get very busy, sometimes we just, uh, we close that down or we, we keep it only to, uh, to overnight.
I don't know if everyone can hear you in the back, so maybe you could speak up. We can't hear.
So the, uh, our spaces have gotten full, our hotel spaces. But there's five acres of park and below, great, there's six hundred and fifty-six spaces. And to my knowledge, that, the, the garage has never been packed or full.
Well, I'm sorry, when you say our spaces, how many valet spaces do you have?
Technically, it's a hundred, but it's valet, so we could put more than a hundred in our spaces. And, and that goes to, uh, when you think of trips, hotel guests, we have two hundred rooms. We have a hundred parking spaces and that really takes care of our overnight guests. Having additional hotel rooms does not mean additional, or roughly fifty percent of, of, uh, uh, single occupant users.
Thank you.
And do you have any sort of partnership with B-cycle? In, in the application, there's some mention of like, yeah, there's, uh, we have some micromobility stations nearby. But do you actually have a partnership with Bcycle or any other micromobility, uh, vendor for your, specific to your guest or a program with them?
Actually, we give, uh, we, we allow, we have bicycles for our guests to use. So, yeah, there isn't, I think there was a Bcycle station on the Walnut, uh, in front of the med for a while. And, and it wasn't getting utilization, whatever. So I think that Bcycle station was moved to, uh, uh, over to Pearl or, or further where they get the utilization. On the corner of Canyon and Ninth, there's a, there's a, a green Lime scooter station. And I think that's getting heavy utilization. So there, so that seems to be staying put.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Um, my questions are for the architect.
Thank you. So let me see. I will start with just some specifics. You mentioned that you see this, um, ad- addition to the site, overall site, um, as an extension of the living room. Can you, um, and this is kind of following up on some of the questions George was asking about. Can you elaborate how the public would engage a living room? Extension in this.
Let me think about how to do that more precisely. I think it's just that maybe the living room isn't exactly the right term, uh, but folks can.
It's your term, I'm sorry, I just used your term.
No, 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 I appreciate that. Uh, I, I think it's an extension of the living room in the sense of it's, it's a place where the public can come together, but it's not a living room in the sense of it's free. So when we're looking at this figure ground that's on this slide right here, you can see all of the areas that are shaded and darker are to some degree public access, but largely they're really not. It's really primarily when you think of the Jillian's, uh, when you think of the bar and the lobby lounge, when you think of the meeting spaces and the boardrooms, this is really an extension of that same basic approach. And it still tries to capture the views to the flatiron, so tries to engage as much as it can with Canyon Boulevard, not questioning the fact that we have to be raised because of the floodplain. I don't know if that answers your question a little bit better.
No, it doesn't really. Um, so if there, if, if the actual enclosed building is not being used for an event, how does the public engage this, um, addition? How is this addition? How do we feel welcome as this is part of our, of our civic use? And, you know, given the fact that the civic use really almost took a backseat here, which I understand. I'm just trying to understand how the public, um, yeah.
I, I hear what you're saying. I, I think I understand. Uh, and, and I think it's very similar to the rest of the building and the rest of any, any, um, any structure known, right? Whether it's a municipal building such as the one that we're within, whether it is a house, whether it is a restaurant. There's going to be times of higher activity and then times of lower activity. And during the times of lower activity, there's still this pedestrian passageway that we're trying to enrich with, with, uh, artwork, with landscape, with the paving system, with lighting and, and then connections and views. And so that is really the public armature there. There's also some bike racks in the middle. So it, I think we'll act in a somewhat similar way, that passageway will act in a somewhat similar way as today. But it's, it's much more curated of an experience where there's going from one zone to the next, to the next. There's something that's unique about each sort of segment of this as you pass from the north to the south or vice versa. I don't know if that answers your question a little bit better.
It, it leapt to my kind of biggest question and concern, which is with this passageway, which really is important to, um, as, as an area, right? It's connecting, um, this part of the civic site of the.
Correct.
Park and all, and that creek and all across to the Pearl Street Mall. So that's a really, really important, um, passageway. And, um, when I look at those, at those sketches, those, um, uh, drawings there, they don't feel very human, they don't feel very friendly. And so I'm, I'm wondering about, there's a lot of, um, criteria around open space. And given that this is part of the open space for the whole project, right? I'm, I'm looking for it meeting that criteria for the human experience, for what's the pedestrian experiencing. Um, and I'll just give you a, a, an example of what I'm wondering about. So the, if I'm coming from the Pearl Street Mall and I'm zigging my way next to the down ramp, go across the alley and come to the widest part, right? The widest part of your, um, passage there. And, you know, then we look, we're looking there where that bicycle is, right at the bottom of those. We're seeing that. And that out there at the other end is the narrow, it gets really narrow before it opens up. That's the view of the flatirons or should be the view of the flatirons. So it seems like it's kind of backwards. The biggest, the biggest experience is happening on the alley. And the tightest experience is happening, you know, so I'm just curious as to the criteria for open space and how that, um, kind of fulfills it beyond these pictures. Is there more information?
There is more information. We don't have all of our landscape plans here. I, I apologize for not bringing that, but there are paving patterns we're bringing, uh, brick and other types of behaviors here, trying to deal with the grades here, which are rather shallow. So we have to get creative with how we're mitigating water and how that transfers through. Relative to the views, what we really focused on was that pedestrian easement that you can see that, uh, runs diagonally. That was something that was originated even when the initial idea of a civic use was conceived. And that was always on the diagonal. It was never intended to go directly north, south. And so we're playing off of that and that, uh, it's hard to describe, I guess, and it's somewhat subjective. But this idea of expansion and compression is something that is really, uh, creates a rich space when it's just a single shot. It, it doesn't work quite as well.
Right.
And of, of course, that is a very subjective notion. But we're trying to create that intimacy and connection and compression right where the passages are happening. So there are two elevators, there's three or four doors there, and they're all interfacing. We want to make sure that that connection is happening. And then it releases again on the south side where you have that accessible ramp that we were discussing earlier. And then there's seating areas there as well as, as you get to that view. So there's a sense of excitement and suspension, if you will.
Thank you. Um, thank you for that. Uh, I have, I have that, uh, additional question. It was about the, um, the mezzanine, the mezzanine for the mechanical.
Sure.
So am I, if I'm understanding your drawings, the, uh, you've got the mechanical kind of off to the north. And then the center, is that just volume? Is that what, what you're calling a mezzanine? It's a volume for the civic space?
That's, yeah, sure, that's right. And, and so the floor to floor on that first floor, that civic use space.
Right.
Uh, is about twenty feet. And because of the large trunks, because of transfer beams, because of a lot of sort of technical things addressing structure and mechanical, we, we needed that whole twenty feet to get to that volume. And then on the northern portion where we were mentioning, you can see here in the plan, we have circulation, we have restrooms, we have stairs, we have kitchen, back of house, circulation, supporting spaces, storage, et cetera. That's where we locate the mezzanine.
That's.
And it's, and it's a delicate balance, but it's something very, very similar to how it was addressed with the original St.
So the salmon colored area is where the mechanical is.
That's right. And I, I didn't show this that, uh, before and Sharon, uh, I'm sorry, Shannon showed this earlier. But here is a section cutting east-west through there. And you can see most of this is civic use. And then there's a small mechanical area that's uninhabited. Most of this is really simply for ductwork. And then if we go back up, you can see another version of that. So it's, even though it is considered a, a story by code, it really is supplemental for mechanical only.
Okay. I, I get it. And, and all of the mechanical didn't fit in there?
Not all of it. We need some that is on the rooftop, so we have cooling tower and things of that nature that need to be outside.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Emile. Go ahead, Kurt.
I wanted to follow up on Emile's question regarding the pedestrian pathway. I asked, uh, staff about the ramp on the south side. Based on your knowledge of the codes, is that, so the existing ramp that is to the left as you're going north of the stairs there, is that something you could build by code today?
To the best of my knowledge, it is. I don't know if we've really examined that, but it, accessibility hasn't really changed relative to the ramp slope. It's been one-twelve for as long as we've been architects, uh, twenty-five, thirty years, something like that. So I would have to, we would have to look at that very closely, but we don't believe that there's anything that has changed with regard to the slope nor the turning ready eye.
Okay.
Of, of course, we're not, uh, designing for bikes per se in that application.
Right. Okay. And then one more question about that, and that regards that column on the southwest, no, northwest corner there.
This here, mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not seeing, yeah, but that, right. What is the distance between the edge of that column and the wall?
The wall to the, to the east, the wall of the civic space.
Yeah.
I don't know that off the top of my head, um, but just looking at it in proportion, it's probably about four to five feet.
Four to five feet, yeah, okay. Did you look at the possibility of eliminating that column?
Definitely. Yeah, we, we've looked at a lot of structural gymnastics through this process. Being able to transfer this slab was a very large one. Uh, looking at trying to cannoli this was another. And, uh, we're a little bit limited based on the structure below. And so we were forced to utilize the structural, uh, grid that was established below.
Okay. And did you look at pulling the corner of the building back further? I think it would infringe on, I think that's the women's bathroom there.
That's right.
Did you look at pulling that back any, just to open that up more?
We did. There's been, uh, a balance of trying to get all of these support spaces, the restrooms, the service, the loading, the trash, all of those along that small facade. It's a rather small facade for a facility of this caliber, if you will, or intricacy, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mason.
A quick question about the MOU, uh, for the nonprofits. It says that, uh, individual nonprofits may reserve the facility up to three days per year, which may not include successive weeks. And it goes on. Am I reading that to, it does say if excessive days greater than three days in succession are agreed. Does that mean that not-for-profits can have more than three days in a year reserved?
Actually, that clause, it was done in conjunction with, uh, with the staff, with the DMC and, and such. And I, what it was intended was that, uh, there's actually, if you look at our exhibit, there's like two hundred and sixty-one nonprofits in Boulder Valley. And, and that list was just as a base to, uh, and if we didn't want collectively, we as, in the city, didn't want seven groups doing one day a week for all fifty-two weeks. So someone could potentially tie up the whole facility for, uh, for every day for, for a year. So we'd said, okay, you know, uh, we'll limit it to a certain number of days. But, uh, obviously if, if there's a one group and they have a multi-day art festival or if there's some other group that's in for days, it's, uh, we'd certainly work with them. It's, it's just a matter of trying not to have one group tie up the facility week after week or for two length of a time.
Great, yeah, that makes sense. And I think this question might be for the architect. I was hoping you could expand on the proposed dry floodproofing design and its compliance with FEMA and city requirements.
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you very well.
Oh, um, could you, could you expand upon the pro- proposed dry, uh, floodproofing design and its compliance with FEMA and city requirements?
So the garage is, the garage is already dry floodproved. Let me, I know that's not exactly your question, but it leads to the answer here. This plan might show it.
So, so while, while we're talking, I'm purposely talking loud, if everyone can kind of speak up in their mics, because I think, I think some people are having trouble hearing us.
Sure, sorry about that. There's dry floodproofing already for the garage, including the entry to the garage from the, uh, from Walnut Street. But the building also has, uh, is designed to have dry floodproofing as well. So that's in the wall construction, it's in the windows, curtain wall and in the doors. And I forget the exact height, but I think it's anywhere from two to four feet above the finished floor height. So I'm, I'm not sure if I, I could get into greater detail, but essentially that complies with FEMA's requirements. That's all I got.
Claudia.
So I have, excuse me, two questions having to do with the site and building design. And I'd like to start with the question of the east facade of the building where you've chosen to pull that back from the property line and eliminate windows. And I understand your, your. And I understand your, your strategy there is to provide some relief, um, to the neighboring, neighboring building, but I'm not seeing much else, um, in the way of design on that side. And I wonder if you can explain a bit more about your design considerations on the side of the building? Are there options, um, that respect the privacy of that neighboring building, but also acknowledge in some way that this, um, this building that you're proposing will become the new view for some of those neighboring residences?
Sure, so first off, we, we mentioned this a little bit, uh, earlier, but we were looking at the Eret, and I think that we should commend them for high-quality materials that are on their facade, largely sandstone, a little bit of stucco towards the back, curtain wall, uh, glass canvites, et cetera, and we tried to emulate that and reflect that in our construction as well. So when you look at this, uh, everything that isn't right at the building property line is, uh, sandstone, limestone, interlocking metal sink panels, and a small portion of stucco on the rear facade. And we did talk about the windows, we talked about murals, I think we're open to any of those, but we just really want to respect the neighbors' privacy. And we didn't want to presume that they would want a certain piece of art, which you could imagine would be rather subjective, but we're definitely open to those types of ideas as well.
And second question is transportation-related, so I was looking at your transportation demand management plan, the trip generation reports in there, and there was some discussion, um, about bicycle parking and this idea that the, the long-term bike parking that's already part of the facility, um, is somewhat undersubscribed, but that there may be more opportunities for short-term bicycle parking in conjunction with an event space. Um, so I just wanted to follow up on what is the location of any additional planned short-term bike parking in this proposal, and how would users of the facility interact with that? Like, where are the entrances? What are the pathways through the site for people arriving by bike?
Hi, my name's Jen Neiman, I'm with forty-two forty also. Matt, do you have plans in here, the garage plans?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, the garage plans? No, I don't have the garage.
On parking level one, so one floor down from the, uh, main level of the convention area, we have, um, enclosed, caged, long-term parking. We've also added additional short-term parking, um, based on restrictions in the floodplain. We're not allowed to put bike parking along Canyon, so we were trying to find other areas where we could add additional short-term parking. We've added some along the corridor, but the bike parking in the garage is literally adjacent to the elevator. So the idea is you bike into the garage down the ramp, you park your bike, and then you come up through the elevator.
Okay, and is the, is the existing ramp signed and designed for that use, or is that an addition that needs to be made in this proposal?
I, I do not, I do not believe the additional ramp was intended for that purpose originally. The hotel elevator, excuse me, the garage access elevator that is there is sized to accommodate a bike. So if I'm being honest, I, I would probably want to take my bike down the elevator and go down, but some might choose to try and go down that ramp if it's more accessible for them if they're on Walnut Street.
Okay, and is there any surface-level, um, short-term bicycle parking provided in this proposal?
There is, there's additional existing bike parking on Walnut Street. I believe there's a couple on Ninth, and then there's also a series of racks that we've put in the actual pedestrian corridor.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I have a question about the calculation of alternative community benefit. Is there someone here who can speak to that?
Bruce can speak to that, yes.
Okay, so here's my question. I'm looking at the packet where you talk about, you calculate the costs of the building, including the construction of the building, the annual operating cost, your property taxes, your staffing cost, and then I see an offset of the rental payments estimated for the civic user groups, and then you subtract that and you get community benefit. But did you in any way account for the revenue that is being generated by the market rate rentals?
Well, the, uh, no, because I mean, this is also assuming that it could be all civic. We don't, we don't really know. So it's built to, to provide to, uh, the, to the nonprofits. And actually, even the revenue from the, uh, if you go through our agreements, it's, it's, uh, it's intended to be cost-neutral to Saint Julian, so in conjunction with the city, we have to show the cost of utilities and maintenance and repairs and things like that to see what we're charging the civic users is, is somewhat netting out. It's not intended that Saint Julian make any money on the civic users. Uh, now, whether, it doesn't include if we do have private users and, and rent to them or, um, because a lot of times on a private side, there isn't rent. We're letting private users use the space and, uh, we, we have room rentals, we've got food and beverage or other things, so it's not, it's not apples-to-apples. But as far as the, uh, the benefit to the actual civic users that are, uh, it's on, it's on us to provide very good detailed records and accounting and, uh, the revenue and costs.
So, so you're not assuming any revenue at all from market rate rentals of this facility?
Not for, uh, from community benefits, no.
I'm not asking about the community benefit users, I'm asking about the market rate, because you've, you've said, here's, here's what this facility costs us to own and operate, and then you've said, here's the revenue that we'll be getting, or, you know, here's the benefit to the community, to the nonprofit groups, but what about the other uses of this space that accrue to the Saint Julian? Are you looking to the nonprofit users?
If there's any private users of that space, then we, we have revenue off the, off for-profit uses of that space?
Yes, are you anticipating that?
Yeah, so we're, we're not assuming that because it's a more complicated, if, if there is any for-profit use, it may not be through a room rental.
Okay, thank you.
We're, we're getting, we're getting pretty deep into things, so I'd ask the board to try to, try to make precise questions and so we can move forward to the public participation. Anybody else have, um, burning questions that we need to ask the applicant? Nope. Okay, great, thank you. Does anyone need a break up here? If not, I think we'll start with, um, public participation, uh, assuming. And so, um, a- as we mentioned at the outset, we, we have a, a lot of speakers, I'm not sure how many speakers we might or might not have online, we're not sure yet, right? Um, but we have at least twenty-five speakers in the room. Um, so I'd ask that everyone try to keep their comments to two minutes. Uh, you'll get, um, you'll get, you, you'll, you have a two-minute clock that will start, um, uh, when you introduce yourself, uh, and we'll start with, um, Peter Neal, then Stan Garrett, then Steve Shifor, Shifor, so apologies if I mispronounce anyone's name in advance.
Chair, this is Vivian online. Would it be okay if I just read out, um, some of the pooling time rules before we start?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And I actually, um, developed just a quick little slide so that people can follow along. Um, so as the chair mentioned, tonight, each speaker will have two minutes, um, to provide their testimony, and we ask that you introduce yourself, provide your address, and share any, uh, relevant affiliation or financial business interest. Um, and tonight, we're trying something new, which is pooling of time, or we're allowing pooling of time, and I'll just explain what that is and how it will work. Um, so three or more people may choose to pool their time, and what this means is that they designate one person who will speak on behalf of that group, and that one person would have five minutes to speak. And for that to happen, each of those, uh, people have to be present, either online or in person. Um, and so either, if, if the designated speaker is online, then only that person should raise their virtual hand. Uh, if it's in person, then they should sign up to speak. And then when that person introduces themselves, they must also tell us that they're, um, they, the time is being pooled so that they'll have five minutes, and they must identify the three or more people who have given up their time and will not speak because they've designated somebody, and give us those first and last names, and then we will have to confirm with each of those persons that they have indeed given up their time. So those are the, that's how pooling time works, and we'll go ahead with speakers in person and then move to our online speakers. But I do ask that, um, for those members of the public joining us online, please go ahead and, and raise your hands so we can start to see how many people, um, online wish to speak. Thank you.
Go ahead, please introduce yourself. No, no, press the, uh, press the button and you'll see a red light at the mic.
Okay, uh, my name is Peter Neal, I'm, uh, I have no, uh, financial benefit from this speech tonight, I think we were asked to mention that. Uh, I'm the probably newest president in the Eret, my wife and I moved in just about three months ago. I, my concern, I think you can see there's a lot of displeasure as a result of the Saint Julian deciding to build a sixty-thousand-square-foot, uh, building on the civic use pad. And what I wondered, many people approached the, uh, Saint Julian and said, how about a one- or two-story structure, something that would give civic use, something that could be, uh, a beautiful structure? Different things were suggested, there was no, uh, desire on the Saint Julians to even dialogue about that. So I started to wonder, what is so important about a sixty-thousand-foot structure? The expressed intent of the Saint Julian is that they, they will use the sixty-thousand feet, and they'll put thirty-nine extended stay rooms into that structure. They need to do that to generate the income to, to finance the fifty million dollars that is needed to build the structure. I did a little bit of arithmetic, and I looked at Google, and I looked at, what is the room rate for an extended stay room? On average, it's about one-hundred to three-hundred dollars per night. Um, I gave them three-hundred dollars and I, at a point-six-five occupancy rate over a, a year, and that calculates to about two-point-seven-five million dollars. The opportunity cost on fifty million dollars at even ten percent is five million dollars. So it doesn't make sense that these extended stay rooms are going to pay for themselves. In addition to that, I took the forty-five thousand square feet that they say they'll put these thirty-nine extended rooms in, divided that forty-five by thirty-nine, and it comes out to eleven-hundred-and-fifty square feet per, per room. The national average for extended stay rooms is...
I'm gonna have to cut you off if you want to finish your sentence.
I'm sorry? The national average is four-hundred to six-hundred square feet for an extended stay room. Why does the Saint Julian need?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, you, um, you, you can email your comments if, if you like, um, if you didn't get something out that you wanted to. So thank you, I appreciate it. Uh, yeah, and it, it, for everyone's benefit, to, to the extent that you can tell your comments the two minutes, I think that's going to be really important to make sure you get your major points across. Thank you.
I want to be as precise as Lynn Siegel, if I can. Um, good evening, my name's Stan Garnett, I'm a lawyer, I represent, uh, the group Protect Boulder Civic Space. Most of the folks here tonight are that group, and we really appreciate the chance to talk to you tonight. I want to tell you too, in my long career, forty-two years as a trial lawyer, I've served on a lot of boards like this, and we really, really appreciate your work. Uh, I know how hard it is, I know how committed you all are to doing the right thing, and to being fair, and we appreciate that. I'm not going to talk very substantively, because I only have two minutes. Um, I want to kind of set the table for what you're going to hear for all these folks who are great people, and we've tried to be precise and focus on things we think you need to hear about this. I will note, as a trial lawyer, I'm very attuned to what we call procedural fairness, and people were a little frustrated we couldn't get extended times to do a presentation like the applicant did, but I think we can lay it all out, both in the papers that we did and what people are going to say. Basically, we're going to ask you to treat this neighborhood the same way you would treat any neighborhood in Boulder. The people you're going to hear from are people that are going to be impacted by this, and we ask you to apply the criteria in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan and in the Boulder Code to make sure that their interests are protected just like any community. I, uh, my office is at nine-hundred Arapahoe, I talk to folks about Boulder stuff all the time, and a lot of people have said to me, why would anybody care what happens? That's not really a neighborhood, that's just a bunch of people in a condominium. Bottom line is, the Boulder that I know and that I've lived in my whole life treats everybody the same. Even people that live in a nice condominium in downtown Boulder deserve the same consideration and attention to the impact on their neighborhood that somebody in Martin Park, or Table Mesa, or any other part of Boulder. That's all we ask you to hear and to listen tonight, because you're going to hear specific observations about all the things that are brought up here, and, and that's what we ask you to consider. Thank you very much.
Steve Shifer.
And Chair, if I may, just to let everyone know in the room, um, there have been a few folks that have submitted, um, visual aids, so, and Steve is the first one, so I'll be displaying that on the screen as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So my name is Steve Shifer. I am a resident of the Eret. Um, I apologize for the small pictures, all of these images are in the, the applicant's presentation. When I first heard that this extension of the, uh, Saint Julian was going to be built, I, the first thing I did was walk across the street into the park and look at this view, and imagine what it was like with this building in it. And my impression was that it feels out of scale to what else is there. And there are a number of issues that other people will bring up in the BBCP. Uh, my concern is about scale and mass, and when I look at this building, if you look at the top, you can see that the other buildings on either side, the Eret to the east and the Saint Julian to the west, are very interesting structures. The Saint Julian is the same height but curved, and the Eret is a variety of setbacks, patios, decks, to create a very interesting view. And this building is essentially a large rectangular block. Um, it certainly has some interesting design elements, and it is designed to reflect the Eret, but in general, it looks very different from the other buildings, and this is the last open place, literally in Boulder, certainly on Canyon, which is the view that people often get introduced to Boulder through. And I believe that there is a way to have this building modified to fit better into the rest of the view, uh, from the south of Canyon, and really create the kind of vi- visual we want in Boulder. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'll ask Mitch Ember, Mark McLaughlin, and then Mark Plink. I'll try to put some people on deck as we go forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, my wife, I'm Mitch Ember, and I live at the Eret. My wife and I have lived at the Eret on the second floor in the middle of the building, facing the alley for thirteen and a half years. Uh, it's our full-time and only residence. Our deck and balcony overlook the alley. Uh, we prefer to keep our windows open as much as possible, so I, I just have a couple of things about living there, and I'm, uh, cognizant of what urban living is. So let me just read a couple of things. Before, during, and after construction, the alley must be kept open for through traffic, commercial vehicles backing out of the alley, either have OSHA backup beeping, or use their horns constantly to back out of the alley. Um, so hopefully we won't increase that. Uh, construction staging must not block the alley with vehicles or construction parking, just small stuff. Workers must be told that they're in a no-smoking zone and adhere to that, and not come under our deck and windows, uh, for smoking. The middle of the alley is designated as the loading zone. It's really worked out well since it's been that way prior to that. People knew they could park in the alley all day, get out of their cars and go to work, construction people too, because there were no signs. The city making a, a designated loading zone has worked well, that needs to be continued to be enforced. Delivery trucks for the Julian, and previously the MED, uh, park in that loading zone and deliver with the alleys, uh, to, to the, uh, to the Julian. Oftentimes, they're running their engines for long periods of time. It must have been cooperative. When I ask them to turn them off, some say they can't for refrigeration equipment or liftgate controls. So we, we have that. And the last thing I want to say is... controls. So we, we have that. And the last thing I want to say is, uh, we know with our windows closed, dumping recycle from 55-gallon containers into the recycle, we hear it in our bedroom with the windows closed.
Thank, thank you. Uh, Mark McLaughlin, then Mark Plink, then Pete Dordick. Is, is Mark McLaughlin here? If not, we'll, um, we'll move to, uh, Mark Plink, and then, um, we'll, I'll just highlight Mark McLaughlin. Oh, sorry.
I also live in the Arete.
So, um, could you, could you speak into the, into the mic? Just bend it, bend it towards your, your face, yeah. Thank you, appreciate it.
I'm Mark McGoldy, I also live in the Arete. Uh, this building won't affect my view, so I'm not here about the view. I'm here about, I understood that when this was gonna happen, it was supposed to be, uh, mixed use from the people from Boulder supposed to use it. Now, I haven't heard one thing about how you're gonna get the regular people in Boulder, Colorado, to come down to do something in this, in their building, in this, what they're, what they're doing, to enhance the experience of the Boulder people to come downtown. I thought that part of this was that the people were supposed to be able to come downtown and enjoy this, okay? You have two new hotels coming in with same kind of convention stuff that these guys have. They also have their own. So what's the deal? I mean, other than building another monolithic building here, it doesn't seem like it does anything for the citizens of Boulder and the taxpayers. I think that's something important. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mark Plink, and then Pete Dordick. Looks like, Mark, you have a presentation? Yeah, great.
Yes. Hi, my name is Mark Plink. Uh, I live in North Boulder. I own a greenhouse company in Boulder, 25 employees. We build greenhouses for heads of state. Um, you know, overseas, we build 100 million-dollar facilities for strawberries and other fun crops, and we built, have built at least 20 backyard greenhouses in Boulder and, um, the surrounding area. We came up with another idea of how to use the civic space, because the question came up, is the community benefit of what is suggested by the St. Julian enough? And here is an idea of something that could look differently. It could have the possibility of having weddings. My kids are, grew up in this town, they're going to school here. They are, luckily, not quite getting there yet, but, um, boyfriends and girlfriends are showing up, and there's no place in town that I would have a wedding for them, or organize a wedding for them, so I'm wondering if this is an alternative worth considering, and I thought maybe I asked the board if they had questions about what that could be, or for me as a expert in greenhouses.
So, so we, we typically don't engage in a, in a back and forth in this period.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I've just been saying it's, it's another alternative that we could do, um, and, um, I think that's it then. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Pete Dordick, and then Sid Tukowski.
Hi, Pete Dordick, I live in North Boulder as well. I have no ties to the Arete, or any financial ties to the project. And my main concern is that this is another monotheistic wall in Boulder. You know, we've got a lot of new buildings that take up a lot of space, and it seems like we're not giving consideration to an up-and-down look to the streetscape, and by putting a five-story building here, I think we're missing an opportunity to keep more openness to the flatirons, which obviously is a big part of Boulder's character, and I'd like you to consider, uh, what I'd always heard, when I, I've been here a long time. In fact, this used to be called the People's Lot, not just a parking lot, and I remember taking the bus from there, and I remember going to the Chamber when it was there. Um, so it's gone through a lot of iterations, but the one thing that's always been consistent is that Boulder's got a character of openness and views to the flatiron. So again, I'd like you to consider a two-story building, which is something that, from the very beginning, I think was really pushed in the newspapers, when we were talking about changing the Citizens Lot to the St. Julian, great addition to Boulder. Now we've got other buildings around it that, I think, the character of which will be spoiled by having just a five-story box sitting on Canyon Boulevard. Okay, I'll give up my-
Thank you. Uh, Sid Tukowski, and then Hubert Farbs.
Hello, my name is Sid Tukowski. I'm an attorney, also here on behalf of the Protect Boulder Civic Space Group. I want to use my time to focus on safety and this pedestrian walkway that the St. Julian has proposed as a safe, clean, delineated area. If any of you have ever walked through this area, you would know that that is not the case. There are dumpsters in the right-of-way, there are constantly delivery trucks, large trash collection vehicles, and other vehicles parked there for hours on end throughout the day. It's congested, and it's dangerous, and these trash bins are out in the open, not behind any enclosure now, and to believe that after we add another 60,000-square-foot building here, that somehow all of the trash will somehow now be behind a screened area is not believable. Further, adding guest spaces where you're going to have hundreds of guests piling in and out of this alleyway on top of the already congested area, with big vehicles parked there moving back and forth, is going to make this a dangerous place for pedestrians. This is not a safe, clean, delineated walkway where pedestrians are going to enjoy going from Canyon to Walnut Street. They're going to be weaving in and out of big vehicles parked there, engines running as we've heard, and it's just simply not safe. And also importantly, it's not safe for patrons and residents in the area. This congestion makes it impossible for any emergency vehicles to respond adequately to any sort of emergency, be it fire or medical emergency. The alleyway is too blocked up as it is, and adding this giant 60,000-square-foot monolithic block right there is only gonna make it worse. This building is too big and out of place for this area in Boulder. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Hubert Farbs, and then Cindy Lindsay.
Good evening, board members. I'm Hubert Farbs. I'm a lawyer, and I'm representing the Protect Boulder group that you've heard from already. What I'd like to do is go straight to the point. There is a requirement in Boulder that a variance from height limitations is supported. You've already focused on this issue, so I'll just repeat some of the things that you've already started. There is an alternative community development precept that is unsupported here, beyond speculation. Yes, it is true that one could calculate a benefit of $640,000 from what's proposed here, but there is no evidence that the need and desire for utilization of this space by nonprofits, a laudable concept, is actually going to occur. And the responsibility for demonstrating that reliable predicate is the applicant's responsibility. What I would say to you further is that the people who live in this region, who are organized in the organization I represent, those people are interested in the proper and appropriate development of a civic use space. They have sought collaboration with this applicant to accomplish that purpose and been rejected. What we would ask of this board is that you hold the applicant accountable to the responsibility for a viable predicate for a height variance. That does not exist here. We ask you to treat that proposal consistent with its content. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Cindy Lindsay, and then Craig McGon.
My name is Cindy Lindsay, and I live in the Arete. I want to follow on to some of the points that Sid made around safety. That's the biggest issue for me. I've had a couple of close calls in that alleyway with trucks and cars zooming around, and my main concern is there's a very nice walkway from Walnut to the alley. The proposal has a very nice walkway from the 10th Street area out to Canyon. There's nothing that has been considered in this proposal for the safety of somebody crossing that space between the two walkways. There's no signage, there's nothing proposed to mark the, the walking area. Um, there're ju, there're trucks there all the time, and, um, there's just no, there's nothing currently planned that helps guide people through that, uh, crosswalk area. Um, and it does cross both the alley and also into the, into the, the top of the 10th Street area. Um, uh, the other thing that, uh, that I wanted to show is a photo of the, uh, the type of trucks and things that show up in that alley. They're large, they block things. Um, the other picture is where the trash is currently located and how, what the plan is to move that out of the way. It's not a pleasant area that we'd call somebody to, to be pulled to walk through there, to head over to the civic area. So it's just a, it's a point where there's some attention that needs to be made. I've talked to the Vision Zero people, I've talked to the Traffic Engineer for Boulder, and to Community Cycles, and they're all concerned that the design is not set up to be safe. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, Craig McGon, and then Patricia Dietzler.
And give me just one moment to pull your slide up, to transition between you two.
Okay, thank you.
For your couple of images. Okay.
Okay, by, by, my, my name is actually Craig Mon, which is close. Um, despite the significant concerns of Boulder residents, the St. Julian has refused to meet with adjacent property owners, which is a requirement of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. Why is the St. Julian allowed to ignore this requirement? The traffic study is based on a 37,000-square-foot building, not the 60,000-square-foot building that's being proposed. Currently, the St. Julian is using the civic pad for parking large vehicles, special setups, and equipment delivery, often taking hours to unload and load. If the expansion is improved, the hotel will have no other option but the 10th Street loading dock for special deliveries. Is this an outcome that, that the city is willing to accept? Given the responsibility to build a civic event space, the St. Julian named it civic, but has not guaranteed that it will be used by nonprofits. The hotel did not conduct the needs assessment, important considering there are several new venues in the area. Operating on tight budgets, it's necessary for nonprofits to carefully allocate resources, including the selection of venues for special events. What if there is not an affordable civic need that justifies this new facility? In the event that the planning board does not terminate the agreement, I believe that the appropriate response now is to further consider the following. Ask the St. Julian to engage an independent traffic study to assess the impacts of the proposal. Two, meet with residents to listen to their concerns and consider alternatives that will better serve the community. Three, survey nonprofits to determine their interest in and requirements for the use of a new venue. In summary, the expansion of the St. Julian does not meet the criteria for civic use, it does not adequately consider the traffic impacts, and it has not addressed the concerns of adjacent residents. I urge the planning board to consider these important issues and deny the expansion.
Thank you. Um, Patricia Dietzler, and then Dan Dietzler.
My name is Patricia Dietzler. It's fine. And I live at the Arete, and I do agree with all my fellow residents for all their concerns that are there, but tonight, uh, the reason that I am here is to be reading a letter from, uh, former member of the City Council, George Karakian, and I have been, uh, acquainted with George for about 15 years. He's sorry he cannot be here tonight. But the letter as re, as written is, "Members of the Planning Board, I served as a member of the Boulder City Council from 2009 to 2015, including a term as Mayor Pro Tem. During my tenure, and even before, I was involved in a number of development projects throughout downtown Boulder, including the St. Julian. In reviewing the current proposal put forth by St. Julian, I can say without hesitation, I would not have voted to approve this project during my time on the council, and I think many of my colleagues would have been hesitant to do so as well. I agree with many of the concerns that have been put forward, including adding traffic and parking issues to an already congested area of downtown, as well as the increased number of large delivery vehicles that will come with the addition of more ballroom and hotel space. Further, I am concerned about the mass and height proposed for this space. I believe that this project needs additional review based on these concerns before it is approved." George. All right.
Thank you. And I got a, I got a second gen. Dan Dietzler. And then, um, and then, and then we have Buffy Andrews, who'll be pooling time with Carl Whitman and Doyle Albee. Uh, they'll all need to be present in order to do that.
Okay, thank you. My name is Daniel Dietzler. On Friday, October 18th, I delivered a letter to Ms. Mohler and to you, the Planning Board members. I hope that you had an opportunity to read that letter and examine the exhibits. Thank you. What the St. Julian partners are proposing is not a civil-use building, as is noted on the drawings, that they call it a civil-use building. It's, it's a bit deceptive to call it a civic-use building. It is a commercial building with no proof that the civic use aspect that was originally conceived will be, uh, will be used. I've looked at my title policy and the appraisal of my property when I, when we purchased it, 2011. I was aware that something could be constructed on the pad, but lotline construction was not communicated to me. My deck will, will now be immediately adjacent to this brick wall that the applicant is proposing. They step it back when they get to the next floor. It's not just me, but Mr. Neely, who has the property, uh, near me, it will, will also be impacted. So, uh, the city approved the, the construction of my unit with those windows, with the deck, and now there, you are at a, uh, crossroads where you can approve or deny this application, or make them modify it. Uh, I respectfully ask that the Planning Board reject the current St. Julian proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Buffy Andrews pulling time with Carrie Whitman and Doyle Albee, if they can just, um, raise their hands if they're here.
Is this on? Yeah. Hi, I'm Carrie Whitman. I'll be speaking with Buffy Andrews. Um, uh, Colorado native, Boulder native, grew up here my whole life. I'm disgusted by this. Um, to sit at the kitchen and look at the old daily camera building, which is now a wall. This is exactly what we're doing again. I own four properties in Boulder. I do not enlarge them. I do not make them larger. I do not try to make financial gain. I do not live at the Arete. I live on West Pearl. I am very, very against this project. I don't understand. I have a nonprofit. I've never been reached out to see if I would put my nonprofit or rent that space for any reason. I'm a designer builder. Um, I design ethically. I design sustainably. Um, I feel like putting a monstrosity of a chunk of square footage, um, and not have any impact to the value of the creative side, the organic side of Boulder. Um, I, I doubt that anybody will mandate the community benefit, the nonprofit benefit. Who is gonna oversee this? And in 20 years, what's gonna happen then? Is it all gonna be about money? Um, so I, I highly am against this project. Um, we also did a little study- We also did a little study and it shows that the, what is it called again? The solar access panels are, with the mechanical on the roof, are covering 80% of the bulk plane on the solar access panel of the Arete. I don't live at the Arete. I don't know. But it's, it's something that I'm, I'm highly against. And I really hope you will consider that Boulder is supposed to be an open space feeling, supposed to be a small town feeling, supposed to allow anybody from all ages to all financial statuses. So I highly, highly vote against this and I hope you will consider this as well.
You okay? Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Charlotte Keith and I moved to Boulder in 1974. I've owned property and built homes in Boulder for all those years, many times over. I'm now retired and I had a choice of a number of, of places to retire to. And I chose downtown Boulder. I felt that it still had that small town feel and the views were incredible. Well, my view is the pad. And I'm looking directly at what will be, hopefully will not be, but could be, a monstrous structure that exceeds with the mechanical. I don't understand how they can exceed the height limitation and still call themselves a civic use building when they have not been able to come up with any nonprofits. I mean, I'm sure that there hasn't been a big bunch of research done about that. It doesn't seem like it. I like the greenhouse anyway. I'm very highly opposed to this whole structure, to the height, the massiveness, and just the occlusion of the feeling of open space and openness and the flat iron view. Thank you.
Thank you. Tatiana Tebow and then Erin Coburn.
Tatiana Tebow, I also live in Arete. I want to just add to a subject about the parking garage under the Civic pad. St. Julian submitted a report stating that parking garage has 137 permits available to purchase and about 40% occupancy during the peak demands. So this is example of how the numbers have been manipulated. Don't play the real statistic because this report is based on post-COVID numbers. We have the report, documented report saying right here in front of, in front of us that when, pre-COVID, when Mett restaurant and Frank Chab House were in business, the capacity of garage was way above of 60% in average and reaching the peak in business, in the peak hours. Also, I want to say about the Arete back alley. Anyone who lives in Arete and long enough knows how congested this area is. So actually, right here, we have some images of the 10th Street corridor. You can see how tight, it's only 20 feet wide and it's electric transformers there. And so there are no way, yeah, two big trucks can pass by. You cannot stop on this area. So talking about this also area where the St. Julian has backup the house operation, always filled with the, with the huge trucks and cars trying, you know, drive by. You can see example like food delivery trucks right there blocking Charlie 11th Street, 10th Street corridor. And here's the Rizalcan truck trying to back up through the alley all the way to 11th Street, maneuvering from the, from the trucks. So I'm prepared for three minutes and I have to cut it short. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Erin Coburn, and I apologize in advance, Dennis Johanningmeyer.
Hi, everyone. My name is Erin Coburn. I'm the general manager of the St. Julian. I also sit on the board of directors for Visit Boulder. I know firsthand how important travel and tourism is to sustaining our local economy. Recent survey commissioned by Downtown Boulder Partnership, Visit Boulder and City of Boulder reported visitors spending almost double the amount per visit compared to local residents. Bringing visitors downtown, generating economic vitality is more important now than ever, especially with office vacancies downtown still far, far greater than pre-pandemic levels. Many downtown businesses are still suffering. Yes, May through October, Boulder can be inundated with tourists, but what about the remaining six months of the year? Can we rely on locals to support downtown businesses during this time? I'm not sure we can. The civic use extension to St. Julian will offer additional downtown lodging and new meeting space that will allow civic groups and nonprofits alike to meet at all times of the year, specifically in the shoulder season when our local economy needs it the most. In addition, programming efforts, whether it be fundraisers, art shows, movie nights, community-based wellness, artisan markets, or other community-driven events will give people a reason to visit downtown Boulder and be reminded of what a great city we have. Next year, the St. Julian will be celebrating its 20th anniversary in Boulder. And what I'm, I'm proud of, most proud of working at the St. Julian is the trust that the hotel's built within the community during that time. And we have people celebrating 20th anniversaries, 50th birthdays every day. Not every hotel can say that. And I know that we'll be able to create these same traditions within the community, nonprofit community and the civic groups. And I look forward to, you know, being at the St. Julian for a long time and very proud of what a pillar the St. Julian has been in the community during that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Johanningmeyer and then Jennifer Maybry.
I'm Dennis Johanningmeyer. I live at the Arete. I also have a business at 1209 Pearl Street. And I'm a member of the Downtown Boulder Partnership. I live in the 600 feet notice area. That's my life. I want to shed some light on the applicant's representations in the, in the travel demand management plan. There is a diagram in your papers, the A5.03. It shows the pathway of access to the primary entrance. The applicant states for guests arriving, attending an event in the proposed civic use space, arriving at the main, will arrive at the main entry of the St. Julian Hotel. They will then proceed to the primary entrance. The primary entrance is approximately five times further from that service entrance than the alleyway. It's approximately 10 times further than the canyon access. Further, the applicant represents transportation network companies such as Uber and Lyft are expected to use the existing hotel entrance on Walnut Street. We've all observed the chaotic nature of these Uber drivers. Has anyone thought, what in the heck are they stopping there for? Anybody? Well, we all have. I offer for your consideration that the guests will be like water and they will float down the pathway of the easiest path to their destination. I ask you to reject the proposal.
Thank you. Jennifer Maybry followed by Sophia Books.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Mayberry and I'm a Boulder native. I've seen and experienced the dramatic transformation of our downtown and our city during the last five decades. Some of the infrastructure and development has been good for our town, but much of it has been disastrous, like the permissive building of ginormous concrete cubicles across the street, across the city, like those constructed in 2012 at 1048 Pearl Street and 1023 Walnut Street, which used to house the Daily Camera and provide beautiful mountain views for all visitors to Pearl Street to enjoy. I strongly object to the St. Julian Hotel ownership plans and urge council and the planning board to reject any control over what was meant to be a public space. Mr. Porcelli, owner of the St. Julian, says the expansion of his hotel will draw more visitors downtown. However, the city of Boulder does not lack for national exposure or recognition. Tourists and visitors are drawn to Boulder and downtown because it has a unique public commons nestled beneath the beautiful flat irons. Mr. Porcelli's hotel already obstructs much of that view and now he wants to control what little remains and sell it to patrons and citizens. That picturesque view is not intended for just a few to enjoy, but for everyone. Mr. Porcelli said in an interview with the camera, quote, "Not everyone can be accommodated to all their wishes." And he is right. The planning board and the council have accommodated too many wishes of developers like him in the last two decades, to the detriment of Boulder residents and our environment. I urge you to, I urge you to deny his request. I implore you. And with regard to new development in Boulder, TDM, it's too damn much. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophia Books and then Lucas Devoe.
Hi, my name is Sophia Books. I live at 19th and Canyon and I am a leadership student at CU Boulder and a volunteer with the United Nations Association of Boulder County, which is a local nonprofit. I have been looking into civic use spaces for a while now. I wrote a letter to the editor of the Daily Camera back in June. And I am against the 50,000-foot expansion from the St. Julian onto the civic use pad so that they can create the new hotel rooms and ballrooms. I think that this is very clearly building for a for-profit venture since it is a for-profit space controlled by the St. Julian, which is not civic use. And it's also very expensive. Like I said, I volunteer with a nonprofit and I just planned a ballot information session for the citizens of Boulder County. And I know that my organization would not be able to afford using this space because it is so expensive. I also don't understand why this is a necessary venture because Moxie Hotel just opened on the hill and they have an event space and hotel rooms as well. Also, this expansion doesn't meet the original intent of the civic space and it is the only space left in downtown Boulder with a view of the flat irons. So I don't understand why we don't turn it into something that is used for real civic use, like a skating rink or the greenhouse pyramid like we saw before. As a student who has been involved in leadership activities on campus and planned many events, this space doesn't seem to align with the student civic use either. I would love to see this space turned into something that is of its original intent and I do not support this expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucas Devoe and then John Coriati.
Good evening. My name is Lucas Devoe and I'm a second-year law student right here down the road at Colorado University. I'm interested in studying both real estate and land use in Colorado. The views expressed today are entirely my own and are not intended to represent those of my peers, the school, and/or any of the faculty. I've come to voice my concerns on what I believe has been a slightly misplaced cause for opposing the St. Julian Hotel's expansion project. While I sympathize with concerns over blocked views, congested alleyway traffic, and the potential diminishment of property values, I do not believe these to be the appropriate grounds on which the opposition to the project should be argued. Rather, I believe the more appropriate grounds for opposing this expansion project should be directly tailored toward those very provisions that the St. Julian Hotel is seeking to make height modification proposals under. The height modification proposal in this instance is being analyzed under the requirements set forth by Section 9214 B1E and sub-paragraph 9214 H6C of the Boulder Revised Code. Specifically, St. Julian has elected to pursue an alternative community benefit under 9214 H6C. Under this provision, the approving authority may approve the alternative method of compliance and height bonuses if the applicant proposes an alternative method and demonstrates that the proposed method will improve the facilities or services delivered by the city or will provide another benefit that is a community benefit objective in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. The argument should rather be that the St. Julian Hotel has, whether they have demonstrated this effectively enough for the proposed build to be approved for a height modification request. The St. Julian Hotel has provided a summary of the proposal's benefit to the community as a multi-purpose meeting and event space in downtown Boulder that provides for below-market meeting space and first right to reserve the space by community, nonprofit, and civic groups. While there are potential rationalizations for this proposed community benefit satisfying objectives of BVCP Policies 1.12 and 8.13, I would like to see more evidence as to this effect. Without more demonstration, the St. Julian Hotel's ability to serve these policy objectives as truthfully as they propose, I'm left unsure of whether they are able to do so. Again, I sympathize with other grounds, but I think this is the true heart of the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. John Coriati and then Michael Bitner.
Good evening. My name is John Coriati and I'm a graduate student at CU Boulder. The views I express today are entirely my own and do not represent the universities. I live in the Fraser Meadows community here in Boulder. I have no ties to this project or to the specific, a specific part of Boulder it is in. Even so, I am here to ask the board to listen to the community's thoughts on the project. The community is benefit that is being claimed here is a civic use that we have not seen enough relevant data for. We have no proof that the space is needed by nonprofits. We have no proof that there are even nonprofits that would actually use the space. Overall, we have not seen enough evidence that there is a civic use that will ever be realized with this project. The community benefit that has been claimed has no relevant evidence to support that it will ever be realized. But we do have evidence that the community will suffer as a result of this project. The profits of a private developer should not come before the enjoyment of the community by the community, by the community members that the development is being developed in. As a result, I kindly ask that the board reject the request for this property as approving it would cause irreversible harm to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Bitner and then I have someone down as Evan, but I don't have a last name. So when, when you're ready.
Michael Bitner. Jennifer, thank you first for glamorizing what's known as the super block back in the 80s. It was a dump vacated.
Oh, can you speak into the microphone?
It was vacated by Boulder lumber. It was, it was a mess. So you, planning board, back in the 80s, came up with a concept and passed this concept with the approval of council, members of the community, retailers across on Walnut Street to do three structures, office building, civic center, hotel. Porcelli did the hotel, by the way, thank you, 32 days in your hotel after the fire. We did the office building. But between the office building and the hotel, the buildings were built down, meaning the, the entry to the hotel was on the east side, more humanistic side. The walkway from Pearl to Walnut is fantastic, open and sunny. The walkway to the alley is nice. But if you put a five-story structure there, sorry Bruce, it's going to destroy this concept of the walkway. Second thing is parking. We represented and worked for the City of Boulder Independent Contractor Commercial Real Estate in the management and leasing of their office buildings, specifically 1100 Spruce, 1500 Pearl, which are the parking structures with offices above. We also worked on the parking of the St. Julian Hotel. We have a very intricate knowledge about parking in downtown Boulder. Unfortunately, there's two parking lots, I'm sorry. Parking is done two ways in Boulder. One, by permit and two, by open. You go in, you pay, then you walk out. There's two lots in Boulder, 1100 Spruce and unfortunately, St. Julian Hotel that had waiting lists all the way through 21 when we finally left the city. So I don't know what happened beyond 21, but those two are crowded. I'm sorry, Bruce, again, but to add more parking and more use in that area would be very, very difficult. And I agree, the alley's a joke. Most alleys are. I'm done. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Evan and I don't have a last name. And then James Colano. So James Colano and then Catherine Gassman. Yeah, so if, if James isn't in here, I'll just highlight him and we'll, we'll try calling him one more time before we go. But, and then after Catherine Gassman, Jimmy Keith.
Okay, hi. Again, my name is Catherine Gassman. I live in the Arete. I called Boulder home from 1977 to 1982. I called Boulder Home from 1977 to 1982. I was excited to return in 2021 to call it my home again. I have a concern about the 10th Street pedestrian corridor. As it's now designed, I question whether residents and visitors will access the Pearl Street Mall from the civic area along the 10th Street pedestrian corridor, as I've read, as it was intended. The proposed pedestrian corridor has a very private feel, given the entry steps, the entry's high and extensive walls in the front of the building, the massive three-story glass walkway that connects the existing hotel to the proposed building, and its overall monumental scale. Figure 15 in the site review confirms this unwelcoming feel as it depicts an almost tunnel-like entrance from both the south and the north, with few design elements that open up the space and create an open, welcoming feel that would lead pedestrians to the downtown business corridor. I urge you to require a redesign of this corridor to make it match the open, inclusive, and welcoming nature of our community and of my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy Keith, and then that is, that's all I have for in-person. So if there are other in-persons, be great to get to us.
I'm Jimmy Keith, and I've been a Boulder resident for over 50 years. I'm going to speak in a little different perspective. I started my career right across the street at Larsen Machine Shop on Walnut and next to the Ritz, and worked right down on the 111 Building for years. The smallness of the neighborhood is what attracted me to work there. The massiveness of the structure completely violates the whole Boulder concept. Downtown people do not want to walk over and see a massive building. They certainly don't want to go through that little alley toward the library, which is so nice now. The, just the massiveness of the building is just plain incorrect, is really what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And so Amanda, I don't know if we have any other in-person?
I do not have any other slips.
Okay, so then is it Vivian who's checking on the online?
Yes. Vivian, we can go ahead and proceed with virtual participation.
Great, thank you. So similarly, please introduce yourself and any affiliation when I call on you. We will go one by one. And also, just a reminder that if you're not sure if your full name is displayed, you can send that to me through the Q and A function, so I know how to call on you. We'll start with Lisa Bartlett, followed by Barbara M., and then Jackie Reich. Lisa, please go ahead. You do have to unmute yourself on your end. Okay, let's start with Barbara M., and we will come back to Lisa. Barbara M., please introduce yourself by your full name.
My name... One second here. I can't hear her from my end, can you?
It looks like she dropped off. Do you want to try that again, Vivian? Okay.
Barbara, try now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Barbara, me and Lisa. I've been a Boulder resident for over 30 years, and I moved here shortly after completing my masters. I moved to Boulder for its natural setting that feeds your spirit and allowed one to enjoy its small-town village feel. It included seeing numerous aspects of mountain and flatiron views and the natural rolling foothill grasslands. What could be more deflating than taking that away? Boulder was supported by appropriate continuity of architecture for the setting, and it lacked urban city sprawl that residents moved to Boulder to escape. The proposed expansion of the St. Julian eliminates the only open space left in downtown Boulder with a view of the flatirons, an expectation for the sizable influx of tourists who visit Boulder throughout its four seasons and for residents who live here. The proposed 55-foot-tall building is too massive and not in line with Boulder's downtown urban design guidelines in regard to specifically, and I quote, "Downtown Boulder is blessed with exceptional mountain views and projects, should be designed to preserve access to this extraordinary asset from the public realm and surrounding area." And also, that one, two, and three-story buildings make up the primary architectural fabric of the downtown with taller buildings located at key intersections. It does not fit into the character of the area. The proposed 39 extended stay hotel rooms and 8,600-square-foot ballroom would significantly increase traffic, compounding the safety and traffic access issues that already exist on this busy section of Walnut Street. It's common for cars to have to wait for oncoming traffic to pass before proceeding down the rest of the street. Many have questioned the necessity of an additional ballroom space, given the facilities provided by the brand-new Limelight and Moxie Hotels and Jewish Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Bartlett. Let's try Lisa again.
My name is Lisa Bartlett. I'm a resident of the Arret. One of the most important issues, which really hasn't been discussed, is fire safety. If the currently proposed structure is built, it will create one building stretching from the corner of 9th all the way to 11th along Canyon. The number and severity of fires over the past few years has skyrocketed, and going forward, the prospect is even more grim. As an example, the Woodyer Place condominium fire in 2021 resulted in a total or partial destruction of all 81 units with terror raining as residents fled for their life, without separation between the building and sufficient access for fire trucks and emergency personnel, as you've seen in the pictures and the drawings. The potential consequences could be catastrophic. Additional comments are based on the presentations tonight. The trash area, as has been described and depicted in pictures, has been a joke and not a pleasant experience for anyone that uses the corridor. And then now, it has been added by the St. Julian a proposed smaller area that would also be trashed immediately next door to the St. Julian, which is not appropriate with the smell, noise, and increased traffic certainly isn't consistent with what should be happening. The Arret also looks, according to the drawings, at a solid wall. That is not reasonable. I do not know anyone in the Arret who wants this. First half of the alley, walking and biking, is very narrow, and pedestrians will have to compete with the endless cars and trucks. Thank you.
Next, we have Jackie Reich, followed by George Bartlett. Please go ahead, Jackie. And thank you, Lisa.
Hello, my name is Jaclyn Reichenader. I'm a part-time resident at the Arret. My concern is, do we really need more event spaces? In 2018, the Boulder City Council indicated a continued civic and nonprofit need for centrally-located and affordable space to conduct meetings, fundraising events, celebrations, exhibits, and performances. However, since 2018, many new event spaces have been and are currently being developed by the city. The newly-built Moxie Hotel and the Limelight Hotel, which is currently under construction, are just a half a mile away from the St. Julian and will add an additional 35 square feet of meeting space and a 15,000-square-foot ballroom. The relatively new Jewish Community Center already accommodates nonprofit events, contributing to reduced traffic congestion in downtown Boulder. Additionally, the Limelight is donating 10% of the accommodation taxes collected to fund grants for community organizations' nonprofits, further reinforcing the hotel's commitment to serve as a hub for community engagement and collaboration. This is an astounding example of civic use commitment. In contrast, the St. Julian has not made such a visible or concrete commitment, raising concerns about whether their development truly serves as public interest or merely maximizes profits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have George Bartlett, followed by Ronald McCormack. Please go ahead, George.
Good evening. My name is George Bartlett. The civic use pad is a tangible symbol of the city of Boulder's enduring commitment to support its community organizations. The St. Julian now claims that its so-called civic use building supports that commitment. I disagree. Where does the St. Julian specifically describe any outreach to Boulder community organizations to find out what specific features they want and need in a civic use space? Where does the St. Julian specifically describe its response to the particular needs of the nonprofit community? Where are the representatives of Boulder civic organizations which actually support this specific project? In 2018, the city council, the staff provided the city council with survey information indicating a community need for affordable spaces for civic groups to conduct meetings and other events. In its community benefit analysis, the St. Julian never mentions affordability. Rather, it merely touts a 50% discount from its for-profit rates. Does a 50% discount on a new Rolls Royce make it affordable? Where are the representatives of the civic organizations which can pay, that can actually pay what the St. Julian wants to charge? Finally, a comment about the purported community benefit amount. The manner in which it has been calculated results purportedly in $650,000 of benefit, but if you have no community benefit using their calculations, the value increases to $1 million. That's straight out of Alice in Wonderland. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ronald McCormack. Please go ahead. Ronald, you have to unmute yourself from your end.
Okay, do you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry. I'm Ron McCormick. I'm an architect for 52 years. I am not local, but I know and love Boulder. I put a daughter through Naropa there, and family members lived there many years, so I love the city. I am the architect who designed the alternative solution for the glass pavilion for the civic use pad that you displayed when Mark Linky was speaking, and he did a great presentation. We offered this concept form as a, for a true civic use for the property. Architecturally, as you may have seen, it's a two-story step-glass structure that gives a much improved open streetscape and much nicer scale, a much-needed relief for what I would call the canyon wall of two, five, or five-story structure all along Canyon Boulevard. This concept, in my opinion, would be a true icon for Boulder. It would be a one-of-a-kind, distinct landmark in Boulder, of course, fabulous views of the flatirons. The interiors would be, the interior would be a large meeting space, but would also include green space that would be lovely in winter, in those cold months. I see it as the highest and best use for this unique parcel, and we hope the concept is embraced by the community. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Any other hands? Any other speakers from online participants who wish to provide testimony? Okay, we have a couple more hands. Lynn Segal, please go ahead.
Yeah, I signed up for the hearing, Vivian. I don't know what happened. But from the very start, this was supposed to be civic space. I don't care what's happened over time. Clearly, Boulder Public wants civic space here. The folk dancers, the performance arts, children's museum, things that we can do here, actually even more than those entities. And that is free things in Boulder. Because guess what? People like me, who pay the high property tax here and live here on Dewey and Six, can't afford to do any of these things downtown. This just brings greater and greater wealth disparity. It's all about profit. When is enough enough for Bruce? When is enough enough? Hasn't the St. Julian had a great run, and isn't that enough? The greenhouse sounds great. Don't give any subsidies to this development. Boulder Valley Camp Plan 2.2, role of central area. The role of the central area is for the people, not for the profit. Too many hotels, as people have said. The nonprofits were not engaged. They were not reached out to. And they don't have the money anyway, so the developers have to pay. People don't come here to look at walls of apartment buildings and hotels. They come for some soul in this town. 1,100 square feet of extended stay rooms, those are too big. The homeless shelter here, we're not going to have any hotel rooms for them. This year, for the first time, they will be dying. The wealth disparity issue is a big deal, big deal. Aspen, Papilio's, we don't need those kind of things. We need a real place.
Please finish your sentence.
We need a real space to come to, a real, something.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have one more person who wishes to speak. The name is displayed as CA, and so I'm not able to call you by your full name. Please start by introducing yourself. If you know who you are, go ahead. You need to unmute yourself from your end. Give this person a few moments. I've tried contacting you through the chat function, but that hasn't been successful. Chair, any advice on what to do?
If they're not available to speak, I suggest we move forward.
Okay. There are no more hands raised. That concludes the public hearing.
Thank you, Vivian. And I know I speak for everyone here. We tremendously appreciate everyone who spoke this evening, who came out. We're Boulder citizens just like you, and we appreciate all of your experience and your comments and thoughts on tonight's hearing. We, the applicant has an opportunity now to address anything, if they'd like to, that they heard in that public comment. Otherwise, if not, Bruce, you want to, okay. Go ahead and...
Just real quickly, the things that come up about the trash in that alley, those are eco-cycle, it's recycling, it's glass, plastic, cardboard. We actually have a 20-yard trash compactor behind our wall on the loading dock, and compost is there. So it's not, it's trash, it's waste, but it's not, it's not trash, trash. And actually, with our compactor, we have overcapacity to take care of trash for ourselves and any additional from this building. We've talked about screening, trying to screen the eco-cycle bins, and, but, planning isn't crazy about that idea, that it's still too close to the right-of-way. And so we're working on a system to get the recycling out of that alley. Yeah, I get, you know, the Arret doesn't want to see the building get built. I get it. I would like to say that, you know, a lot of the operable balconies, windows, whatever, on their western facade really, you know, really shouldn't be there. And they did sign a declaration and recorded declaration to the city attorney's office. through the city attorney's office acknowledging that a 55-foot building would be built next door to it. So they know this was coming. As far as protecting views, I'd like to remind them that the Eret completely blocked the Exeter Building to its north across the alley. I mean, all that southerly views from that Exeter Office Building just got completely annihilated by the, by the Eret. And what we're doing is, yeah, there's some due west views, but we're not affecting anyone's southerly views, like the Eret affected the transwestern. The, as far as on the setbacks on the, the east, our east side, their west side, our team kind of estimated that their setbacks are about 1,900 square feet on their facade. Our setbacks are about 3,300 square feet. So we actually have gone sort of above and beyond trying to create setbacks to, to provide some space between the, between the two buildings, which for infill, urban infill, where buildings always go up to sort of the property line, I think we're, we're going above and beyond what, what should really be necessary. The,
Hi, sorry. It's Jen Niemann with 4240. Just a couple of really quick points with regards to safety in the existing 10th Street corridor. Right now, it's open. There are no guidelines. Trucks are going to mill in that area. They are going to pull in and pull out of the big open lot. It's not being policed. What we're trying to do is create an area with paving and lighting that's safe, that'll draw people in. We're actually reducing the length of that corridor by 80 feet by enclosing part of it. So it will be more sheltered. There will be more eyes in this area, and it will be safer than what it is now. Typically, the traffic in this area, the Eret and the adjacent buildings on the opposite side of the alley go towards 11th. But most of the loading is happening between Walnut and on 10th, right adjacent to St. Julian. Our goal would be to enhance paving, add signage, invest in the area from Walnut along the entrance into the parking garage and across that alley in a way that would be safer than what it is right now. Right now, it's just open. So what we would like to do is try and create something a little bit more sheltered and more intuitive. The other small item I'd like to address is the existing utilities on the site. The idea of a greenhouse or a folk courtyard or some of these ideas are beautiful and wonderful. But our entire site is located over a parking garage. Excel Energy will not allow a transformer or any additional power to be brought onto the site. So the idea of having a separate structure entirely from the St. Julian is not even a possibility. So just something to keep in mind. One thing that we're able to do by combining the civic use with the hotel is utilizing the existing utilities from the hotel. We're not bringing in new utilities for the addition. And we're able to do both. We're able to provide an area for civic use as well as offset that pavement by having some rooms for the hotel. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think it's probably best for us to take a little break. So it's 9:35. Why don't we reconvene at 9:42? Give us seven minutes. Thanks, everyone. All right, we are getting reassembled. We typically put up the key issues that we'll be discussing. But before we do that, I think some board members might have some clarifying questions that they want to ask staff. So if Amanda, or whoever's manning it, if we could put the key issues up for when we start talking that through. But in the meantime, if there are members that want to go ahead and ask any clarifying questions to staff, feel free. I know Laura, you want to start?
Thank you. I have just two. The first is that pedestrian corridor. Some comments were made about concerns by the traffic engineer or concerns by the fire department. Have staff, the traffic department or the fire department, expressed concerns about the design of that pedestrian corridor with relation to the alley?
No, this has been reviewed by transportation staff and by the fire marshal, and they did not express concerns about the design.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is, could staff, this is probably in the memo, but could you just please clarify for us the property ownership history, right? Was it ever owned by the city? Is it owned currently by the St. Julian? Like, what is the history of the property ownership?
Of the area where the new structure would be located?
Yes, of the civic pad.
Yeah, that was, I think I have a diagram here. Yeah, the, that parcel was owned by the St. Julian and prior private property owners. It was never owned by the city where the civic pad is located.
Thank you.
Any other? Kurt?
Just one quick follow-up regarding the pedestrian path. Would it be within our power, I guess, to require some sort of an upgrade to the crossing of the, the alley there as part of the transportation infrastructure? It seems like there's a nexus to this development. So, does that seem legally defensible?
I think it probably does. I think you would need to tie that condition to one of the site review criteria about access and circulation.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So I, I have a, I have a question that I'm still confused on, and I think it was touched on at the beginning, but around the civic use. As we talk it through, I know that's independent of the site criteria. That's my question. Is it independent of the site criteria?
Yes, that's correct. So the civic use and what is, meets the civic use criteria of the urban renewal plan has already been decided by city council in the 2019 agreement. So what you all are looking at are the site review criteria and the criteria analysis provided to you by Shannon.
Okay, so am I understanding you correctly that as, as the planning board, we're really not looking at the civic use as our, part of our deliberations?
Correct, correct.
All right, that's, yeah, go ahead.
Just a colloquy on that. It seems like that there is a crossover into this alternative community benefit, that they are claiming that the civic use provides the alternative community benefit, which is part of our purview. Is that, would that be correct?
That, that's correct. So the, the criteria of approval for your alternative community benefit that you all are looking at can include talking about the civic use.
Okay, so that, that's our nexus then, is that?
But what the civic use is and what it entails and how that is achieved to meet the urban renewal plan has already been decided by city council and is not part of your decision-making today.
Thank you.
So can I call a colloquy too? But we can, I'm part of the-
I need a flow chart.
Part of the alternative community benefit criterion is the, relates to the valuation of that.
Correct.
And that is something that we can address.
Exactly. Yes.
Other questions? Mason?
Thanks, one follow-up. So I see that there's an $80,000 total increase of affordable housing fee, but I think if I read correctly, and please do correct me, if I'm wrong, they're, they're avoiding that through that alternative benefit calculation, but that alternative benefit is largely based off of, you know, the cost of building the building and things that they're doing, perhaps for profit in the long run? Am I understanding that correctly?
So I'm not sure I can speak to the second part of your question. I think the applicant's presentation probably speaks to more how they got to that community benefit number. However, instead of doing the alternative community benefit, they could pay that $80,000 fee.
And the alternative community benefit is building the building?
From what they've provided, and Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong, the alternative community benefit that they've provided is the civic use, how that's being provided as a meeting space to nonprofits and the community.
20 years of amortization of building the building, the operating costs, the property taxes, the staffing costs, et cetera, right?
Yes, what they've included in their application materials, yes.
Okay. Well, yeah, I have, I have a follow-up to that. So, so when you say that they, they can provide that instead of the alternative community benefit, can you explain what you, what you mean? Can you elaborate on that a little?
Yeah, so let me pull up the specific section in the code. So what it says is for, in order to get a height bonus, which they're asking for, which you guys are reviewing, they have to meet one of the following criteria. One of those criteria is a, for non-residential developments is a capital impact fee, which is the $80,000 that you all see in there. Another one of those criterias that could be met is the alternative community benefit. So they've chosen to go with number four, which is the alternative community benefit in lieu of paying that fee.
Okay, so just to, just to clarify on that, just because they provide, let's say, the $80,000 as the community benefit, right? Or the alternative community benefit of what they've proposed, that doesn't necessarily, based on how the board deliberates, may or may not satisfy what we think is needed in order to meet a site review criteria if we can cite what it is that we're looking at. That's correct? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mark. So to further clarify-
So, to further clarify, let's say, the applicant has entered into a contract with the city and with Caged that says they are going to provide this alternative community benefit that in the application, they have valued it 638, 950, okay? However, would they not like when other applicants come to us and say, gee, we're going to do affordable units on-site, and then at the last minute, they change their mind, which is their prerogative, and it's well within, it's not against the law or anything else. They say, you know what, we're going to pay cash in lieu. Can that same scenario not happen right now where the applicant, should they want to, say, we're just, in spite of having a contract with the city, we're going to come up with $80,400 bucks and call it a day?
So, yes, they could go that way with the caveat that they still do have to do the civic use that they've agreed to in 2019.
Okay, so that's the question. So, they have to do the civic use. So, they've entered into a contract with the civic use.
Correct.
They valued that at 638.
Mm-hmm.
So, in fact, they couldn't just pay the $80,000.
Can I take a stab at this?
Wait, 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 I just want to hear it.
I'm deliberating in my head. So, the standard says that if one of the following criteria is met, so one of the ways you can meet that criteria is do the $80,000. The other one is providing an alternative community benefit, of which there's two criteria on how that's met. I think they could pick either or. Now...
Yeah, but it's complicated by the fact that we have a contract that we, the city is part of, and the applicant is part of. So, this may be moot, and it's probably a waste of time to debate this, because we have a contract, and the contract between the city, it says, this is what's going to happen.
Correct.
We're going to provide a civic use, and it doesn't, whether the number is 638 or 510 or whatever it is, we've got a contract between the applicant and the city that says this is how they are going to meet the alternative benefit for the height, and that alternative benefit is through the civic use as agreed to in the contract.
So, no, not necessarily. What the city and the applicant agreed to was that the civic use would meet the 20% civic use requirement in the urban renewal plan. So, that agreement is not related to your site criteria that you're looking at today as far as what it satisfies, right? So, the agreement satisfies the civic use requirement in the urban renewal plan, and then you have the two criteria here that if alternative community benefit is provided in the site review plan that improves facilities or is the value equivalent to the benefits required in the first sub-paragraph, then that can meet it as well. So, it's two separate achievements in the bolder land of law, I guess I would call it. So, there's one on the urban renewal plan, one that you're looking at here at the site review criteria.
So, I just want to clarify. This meeting is going to be so clear, so clear. It feels to me like they're trying to use the civic use to do two things. They're trying to make it serve a double purpose. Meet the urban renewal plan agreement from the 2019 with the city, and also use it for community benefit. And I don't think it's the applicant's choice of whether they get to do that. It says that we, the planning board, may approve the height modification and use this as the justification. We do not have to. We could require them to pay the inclusionary housing fees instead if that is our choice. And I just want to bring us back to the discussion we had when we modified the site review criteria. This is the first time, I think, that we are doing a project that has requested alternative community benefit.
That's right.
And when we talked about this, we said, let's let people propose it, and we don't have to accept it, right? We have a system for impact fees, and one of those impact fees is this inclusionary housing benefit. And we have opened it up to creativity and said, show us a different community benefit, right, and make your case, but we don't have to agree with them that that is sufficient or just as good as the inclusionary housing fees.
But if the, if the alternative community benefit, and, well, I'm sorry, if the civic use is being fulfilled by discounted access to the space, and that fulfills the urban renewal portion, then, but they're discounting it. So, if we said, hey, we don't like it, or we don't think the 638 is a valid number, you've overestimated that, then, they still have a contract that says they have to provide discounted space, but then it would be, it would, we get into a very muddy area of then of us valuing how they might meet a different requirement than paying $80,000, because they could say, we're not discounting this access anymore. We're paying the $80,000.
I don't think they could do that.
They would still have to, because that's what stipulated in the agreement.
In the agreement, so they still have to discount the space pretty much regardless.
They have to follow the 2019 agreement and give the discounted space no matter what. And I would argue that they're trying to double dip, to be quite frank.
Well, and Board Member Kaplan's right. If you made findings tonight that the alternative community benefits didn't satisfy the criteria, you could look at the $80,000. Yeah, we, I have one more question on this whole civic thing, and I realize that that's an agreement that was made with council. When you say it meets, the decision was it meets the 20%, why isn't this an evergreen contract rather than capped at 20 years? That is what I don't understand, because I don't, how, what's the justification that it meets the 20% if it expires?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure I have that answer. I think that was what was decided between city council and the applicant on what meets that and what satisfies that criteria.
Yeah, but I thought the 20% was predates that agreement, right? So, how does, what's the justification?
Yeah, so, the agreement was sparked by actually an amendment to the urban renewal plan in 2015. So, the council, the St. Julian, worked in 2015 to amend the urban renewal plan for a hard requirement of 20% to up to 20% pursuant to an agreement. So, the urban renewal plan, which really only covers the St. Julian property on Ninth and Canyon, was amended to accommodate this 2019 agreement.
But it was amended in 2015?
The urban renewal plan, yes.
So, when the renewal plan was amended...
With a letter of intent that set forth what the provisions of the 2019 agreement.
Okay, but the amendment itself had a hard 20%?
Actually said up to.
No, no, up to 20%.
Up to 20, which means zero, would be zero.
Okay.
Quick, quick clarification. Sorry, this is very fast, I promise, I promise. Mel, you've been patient. You said "or" on A and B. Are you sure it's not "and"?
I didn't mean "or." It's "and," so, one A and B.
Okay, great, thanks.
So, my different question is, depending on, you know, what this board ends up deciding and all, can you speak a little bit to what the implications of the vested rights are? Are they bound to whatever decision we make, or there's some...
Yes, yeah, so they've requested statutory vested rights, which is their right, and honestly, the city really doesn't have any steps to take in that. We just, we have that form, so they let us know that they're requesting those additional vested rights. So, what statutory vested rights gives you is three years on any approval of a site-specific development plan, so three years to develop in accordance with what you all approved today.
So, if it's not approved, what happens to vested rights?
They don't get vested rights if, with, it's not approved.
Got it, okay, thank you.
It's only on an approval.
Anybody else have questions? I just have a quick clarifying question. I think that's what I read, but their by right is 38 feet.
In DT 5, yes.
Okay. So, on the clarification of by right, what can they do, they have this agreement with the city, what can they do by right that doesn't involve this board making exceptions? What's the, what's the, what's the volume of the building? What are we talking about?
I think they get a 1.7 FAR at 38 feet.
What is that?
20% open space.
20% open space on the site?
In total.
In total.
The site includes the St. Julian.
Right.
Which already exists.
Yes.
And so, they have a 1.7 FAR with 38 feet, which would equate to what in square footage for the site?
I would have to do math.
And a potential zero lot line on the, on the east side of the subject property.
Yes, that's correct.
Zero lot line there.
Yeah. Okay.
And still the required civic use?
Yes.
And still the required civic use.
Always the civic use.
So, always the civic use, even if they would, if they did by right, if you could, if you could do the math, just so we understand it, that would be helpful.
At this hour?
Goodness. I don't need it right away, but it would be helpful. I know, I think we'll be talking about this for a while.
I would also note, Chair Boone, the 20 years that you all asked about is in line with what they had approved originally as well. The 20-year sunsetting period on the civic use requirement was when they approved the St. Julian as well.
I'm sorry, just to follow on, a colloquy to what George just said, that 2019 agreement, which I have not read word for word, doesn't it refer to a five-story building?
Yes.
Right? So, how can they follow that agreement if we limit them to a 38-foot height limit, like a by right? If we don't approve the height exemption, would they still be subject to that 2019 agreement that assumes a five-story building? One second, please.
I do not see that it references that as to be a five-story.
I'm doing math, what's the question?
Board Member Kaplan, could you reference what section of the agreement that you're talking about, because I cannot find it?
No, I probably couldn't. I just thought, I remembered reading in the agreement that it talks about the five stories and it being like three stories of hotel uses and one, you know, a high-ceilinged meeting space. I'm pretty sure that's in there.
It does pretty correctly describe the building that's being proposed in terms of uses and site and size.
What page does that agreement start on? It's like 150 or something?
158 in the packet.
I could try to find it. Mason, do you want to give the page number that you're looking at? If this is in the 2019 agreement?
Yeah, it's 158, recitals, B, St. Julian, blah, 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 including three floors of extended stay hotel units and ground floor flexible amenities intended for use by guests and civic groups and non-for-profits. I don't see the top floor mentioned there.
Does it mention the height? So, the many stories?
And then the next section, C, similarly is pretty closely describing what we are seeing.
It doesn't say height.
Yeah, the recitals don't mean anything, right?
Let me take a look at this, and you all can continue, and I can circle back if that's okay.
Okay.
And in the meantime, the 1.7 FAR, the Mad Max is out at about 50,000 square feet, so similar to what they're proposing, but that likely...
Similar in volume, but it'd be limited by 38.
Yeah, by the height and the setbacks.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, but wouldn't, I'm sorry, wouldn't the FAR be calculated on the whole site basis, including the St. Julian?
Yes, that's...
So, you're doing that?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay, other, any other clarifying questions? No? Do we, can we put back up the, and so, we're still, we're still holding on to one legal question. In the meantime, we can put up the key issues for discussion. I'm open to suggestions on how we attack this. It's...
So, my suggestion would be that we start with a motion, and then we talk about amendments. And if we want to propose an amendment, we have to justify it based on the code. And then that gets to this question about, is it consistent with the site review criteria and the urban design guidelines, et cetera, et cetera? Because we would only be proposing an amendment if we think it is not consistent with those things. I mean, that is assuming that there might be a majority on the board to approve the project in perhaps some modified form. I don't know if you want to straw poll that before we start with a...
We can certainly, I mean, are you proposing? Are you proposing?
I would propose we do a straw poll to say, are we inclined to approve the staff motion with, I'm assuming, some kinds of amendments? And then if that is the case, then we just go ahead and put a motion on the table and start proposing amendments. That's my proposal, just to speed us along.
Set that a proposal.
That's, that's fine, to do a little straw poll of, so you want to restate that, just so that everyone's clear on what you're suggesting?
So, my straw poll suggestion is, are we as a board or individually inclined to approve the motion, approve the project, with understanding that we will be proposing some amendments as a group?
Mason's a thumbs up, Claudia's a thumbs up, Laura's a thumbs up, Mark, Mel, Kurt. I'm going to abstain at this point. I just don't, I don't know one way or the other, but we have plenty in the straw poll to bring that forward.
So, then, if that's the case, perhaps one of us would like to make the motion, and then we can start getting amendments on the table.
Could we please have staff's recommended language?
I found, oh, okay. I'll move to approve site review application under LUR 2023-00046, adopting the staff memorandum as findings of fact, including the attached analysis of review criteria and subject to the conditions of approval recommended in the staff memorandum.
I'll second that. Sounded like people wanted to discuss amendments.
So, as in terms of process, maybe we just get out, what are the kinds, let's just discuss what are the kinds of amendments we might want to propose that works for people?
Kurt?
Yeah, I just have one fairly minor proposed condition regarding the crossing, what I was asking about, the crossing of the alley and improved signage and marking for that to help guide pedestrians across that way.
I'm a little unclear.
Are you moving to amend?
It would be, yeah, it would be amending the motion to add a condition.
Yeah, and in terms of process right now, Mark, I think we're just discussing what kinds of amendments we might want to put out there.
Before we're putting them out.
Before we actually put them out there.
Okay. Anyone else have any thoughts that, yeah, go ahead, Laura?
I have potentially three. One is moving to require the project to provide the community benefit for the height modification in the form of inclusionary housing fees rather than the alternative proposed community benefit. Two would be, again, regarding the wayfinding signage, making it really clear that this is not private property, but this is a public access corridor. Just looking at some of the proposed renderings, like you walk up to that tunnel from Canyon, and it says St. Julian, and you have to walk further into it to see 10th Street this way. And I think you need to make really clear from the street that this is a pedestrian corridor. So, maybe, and maybe that goes with Kurt's amendment. And then the third one is, and I want to put this out here for board consideration, is potentially requiring some public rooftop access. So, carving away a little bit of that fifth floor, which would set the facade back a little bit from the pedestrian view and provide some public access space. And whether that is for rent, like the meeting space, or whether that maybe has some time when it's free to the public, we could be... when it's free to the public, I, we could be discussed, but, but potentially requiring some open space on the roof.
So you're, you're talking about, in that scenario, that's a, that's a major design change because they would have to delete some hotel keys probably to accommodate that.
Correct.
Okay.
To clarify on that, the, the reason, I think that the reason that the rooftop space was deemed unsuitable, unworkable, was because elevator shafts have to extend above, right? Same with, same with stairwells, but stairwells don't qualify as an ADA access. So that space, if you said, even if you said, I'm going to cut out one of the rooms and my elevator shaft top is going to occupy that space of the fourth-floor room, that still doesn't get a person who can't make it up the stairs onto the roof.
I think she's talking about putting a portion of the roof down a level so that they can access it.
Oh.
Basically, a part of the building would only be four stories tall and have a rooftop deck instead of that fifth, carve away a piece of the fifth floor basically and make it a rooftop deck.
Other thoughts? Go ahead, ML.
I, so one of the things that I'm interested in expanding is if the open space is, if the open space is inclusive of what exists, I think we can apply the open space criteria. And there's a lot of criteria that talks about the human scale and it talks about having furniture in the open space, it talks about amenities. And so I would be interested in pressing the criteria around open space to be adhered to, I guess, because it doesn't appear to me that it is at this point in time. So I would, I would want that criteria to be acknowledged. Secondly, I think that there are a number of things with the Ninth and Canyon Urban Renewal Plan, and that is a part of the site, site review criteria, talks about if there's any plans, area plans, or other things that govern, it needs to adhere to those. So we're, it's subject to the Ninth and Canyon Urban Renewal Plan. And there's a number of things that talk about the pedestrian access. It talks about the functionality of that pedestrian access, it talks about 10th Street Alley, and I would want there to be, to adhere to the requirements of the Ninth and Canyon. And I've got, and I've got the specific items within the Ninth and Canyon Urban Renewal Plan that need to be adhered to. But I think that the bigger question, and I don't know if staff is looking at this or not, is whether or not this meets the alternative community benefit strategy, because it seems to me that the, you, or the benefit that was, the benefit dollars that were attached to the civic center were all speculative. And so I'm just not convinced that they would meet that criteria. So if, if that criteria isn't met, alternative community benefit, what I'm interested to find out and what part of that agreement, does that agreement specify the building height? What does it specify aside from the fact that there's a civic use?
It specifies that you have to go through site review if you want to do a fifth story or if you're required to pursue any other development approvals. So it doesn't specify any prescriptive standards in the agreement for a two-story building, a five-story building. It says, if you want to do a five-story building, you have to go through site review.
Okay, great. Perfect. Thank you for looking that up. So those are my concerns, that we've got this five-story building and we don't have really much of a community benefit. So I'd, I'd like to find a way to, to address that.
Other thoughts or amendments? I wish I could propose just amending to the greenhouse because I thought it was cool, but I don't think that's. Right on top, exactly.
Can I, can I just colloquy on that? I, I think that all of us, like if you gave us a choice between a, a five-story hotel and a really cool greenhouse design that looks kind of like the Louvre, we'd be like, yeah, that's a cooler thing to have in Boulder. But it's not our site, the city doesn't own it, we did not buy it, we cannot require them to build a greenhouse there.
Yeah. I think that's.
And actually, I would encourage us to, rather than be interested in or be, I, I'm, I want to, I want to urge us all that if you want to amend this main motion, now's the time to do it precisely and in writing and to make that motion. And that other concerns, other thoughts, we're at the amending portion of this.
Kurt?
Well, following up on that, I sent Amanda a proposed amendment. So I don't know if we want to take that up.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we, why don't we start there unless?
So I move to add a condition, reading as follows. In collaboration with city staff, the applicant shall design improved crossing markings and signage for the intersection of the 10th Street pedestrian way and the east-west running alley north of the site, and the plans shall be revised accordingly.
All right. Do you want to have any discussion on that? One thing I thought that you brought up that was interesting was that column. And I heard the architect and the owner talk about how infeasible that was. But, you know, that, that is, it's interesting, right? When you think about this near tunnel that's being created because you've got this three-story bridge that sits above it. And the idea that you might have a pretty massive wall of building without much transparency through the site. And to your point, wayfinding is a great signage and things like that, but I guess the question is, does that go far enough to make that space an accommodating pedestrian pathway that people will take without more transparency, without some more enhancement? I, I don't know. I, I just wanted, before, before, before we, I don't know if you have thoughts on that since it's your motion, if, if it's worth discussing that.
Yeah, I, I feel that they are somewhat independent, but certainly related issues. I think that they could happen independently.
Okay.
But I would support a requirement that the column be removed and they can, they could figure out the, the engineering to make it happen.
So your motion was really clean, so maybe we want to, if we want to vote on a motion like that.
I don't, I don't know what kind of impact that's going to have on the building. I know that there was a need to dissociate the buildings from each other so to not trigger, you know, floodplain requirements and things of the nature. There was a lot of discussion, so I wouldn't feel comfortable supporting the column unless knowing what impact that actually has on the building designs, what could fall out.
Because you can cantilever things, you can do things. It's a question of materials, what's get sacrificed in the building, to your point. But yeah.
Procedurally, we've got a motion to amend that's been made and seconded, and we should be debating that. And then the column, unless you want to amend this proposed amendment, I suggest we debate this and then go on to debating other things.
Yeah, that's fine.
And if I can just speak to this, I feel that this is justified based on site review criteria 9214 H2A, which speaks about the, the pedestrian access on the site. And also, Baldi Valley Com Plan Policy 6.01, All Mode Transportation System 6.02, Equitable Transportation 619, Transportation Infrastructure, and 620 Neighborhood Streets and Alleys.
Other discussion, otherwise we can vote on this. Who, who seconded it? Sorry. Claudia did. Okay. Mason?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Me, Mark?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Okay, so that motion carries unanimously. Well, Laura, Laura has one teed up, so maybe we, maybe we switch to that one while you put, while you, you can put it in writing.
I see yours and we'll type it out. Okay.
I'm sending you all three. I've sent you two and I'm just working on the last one, so I'll be right with you. Okay, I'm ready when you are, Amanda.
Okay. Go ahead with your first one. Okay.
I move that the project shall provide community benefit for the height modification in the form of customary inclusionary housing fees rather than the alternative community benefit proposed by the applicant.
I'll second that.
Yeah. We'll all second it.
And I'll.
I did.
George did. And I'll just, I'll just speak to the motion to say, I do think a height modification is appropriate in this area. I speak about this every meeting, but we have a process in place for approving heights up to 55 feet, and it is this site review process. It's not a special dispensation, it's not a subsidy, it is just, this is how we do it if you want a 55-foot building. I do think a 55-foot building is appropriate in this area. It has been discussed for decades, it's been part of the previous agreements, and this is the area of town, it's DT5, right? It is the area that is zoned and the land use is for the most intensity. And this is the corridor along Canyon where we have tall buildings that's all around. So it is, it is appropriate to the context, I believe, and I do think that we, this is where we want intensity in the city, is this downtown area. So I support the height modification, I do not support using the proposed civic use to, as I said, to double dip and use it to meet the 19, or the 2019 agreement as well as the alternative community benefit. And I agree with ML, I, the applicant's numbers are hard to parse, they don't appear to include any revenue stream from the market rate use. I don't know if the applicant says they're not anticipating any revenue from market rate. How are they coming up with their market rates in the first place if they don't think anybody will actually pay that? So it just, I'm not convinced that, that we would be getting an alternative community benefit that is the equivalent of our known need for inclusionary housing and the formula that we have for customary inclusionary housing fees. I would say we stick with what we've got instead of doing an alternative community
Can I speak to the motion?
Yeah, sure.
I'll keep it really short because I also support, but for a different reason, even if the numbers are correct, it's 20 years. And I think that these sorts of alternative methods should be for the life of the building.
Yeah, I, I, I'll speak to, I, I don't know whether I support the height modification, but if the height modification were to take place, I see no reason why we wouldn't include this. To Laura's point, I, I just see it as a double dip. There's already a requirement on the table that they've got to provide this, provide the, the civic use. So I see no reason to exclude them from the inclusionary housing should, should this go forward. Any other comments? Yeah, Kurt?
Just quickly, I certainly support the height modification. I think that the, this, from the beginning, this building has been conceived, both back in, when, when it was conceived as a, as a museum and the dance space, it was conceived of as a five-story building in 2013 or 2015 or whatever there was a concept plan. That was a 55-foot building. And so I, I think that all along, that's been the conception, and so I support it. But I definitely support Laura's amendment.
Yeah, I, I also support, based on all the reasons Kurt just enumerated, and in, including mainly the, the being surrounded by other 55-foot buildings. You know, I visited the site repeatedly. You stand on the pad and you look around and you, you are surrounded by other 55-foot buildings. And architecturally, the design fits in. There, there is no, there is no case to be made that this one building, regardless of civic use or, or anything else, would not fit within the, and it's funny, we, you know, I'm not a fan of the word neighborhood character, but in this case, the, the local character is a bunch of 55-foot buildings, and so it fits within that.
So you're a fan when you can use it.
Yeah. No, I, I, I did not use it, local, local building character. But I, I support the.
But I think, yeah, and I don't think we're, we're, we're not talking, I mean, I think we got carried away with the height thing anyways, because I don't think that's what your amendment's about. Your amendment's about supporting the.
Well, it's, it's about meeting the requirement.
Meeting the requirement.
To build a 55-foot building.
So, so the motion that we made to accept the proposal includes the height modification. And so if somebody did not want the height modification, we would have to amend it to not approve the 55 feet, because as proposed, it's a 55-foot building. My amendment is just about how are they going to meet their requirement in the site review? Yeah.
Yeah.
And if I could just propose some clarifying to this condition, just to keep in line with the Boulder Revised Code, if you'll bear with me. So in here, I think it should say instead, in order to satisfy the additional criteria for height bonus and land used intensity, the applicant shall pay the affordable housing portion of the capital facility impact fee in Section 42062 BRC as required by Section 9214 HC, I believe it's only HC, but we're checking on that. I will send it over to Amanda. I just want to make sure we had the right terminology.
I completely accept and appreciate you using the specific code language here. So yes, if, if, who was my second? George, are you okay with the modification?
Yeah, I'm, I'm your second. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so I think we can probably go ahead and vote on this, understanding that.
Yeah.
The record will reflect what Christine said about which code sections this is referring to.
Yeah, that's great. Mason?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay. Great. Next motion, I think it's also Laura's motion.
I have a second, if Amanda wants to pop that up, I'll go ahead and start reading it. I move that wayfinding signage shall make it clear to pedestrians that this is not private property but a public pedestrian corridor.
May I make a suggestion? Usually, we're encouraged to frame our conditions as the plans shall be revised to show X.
Let me work on that.
Let me work on that. Thank you, Kurt.
I have a question, a legal question, maybe it's a legal question. Charles, are you gonna? When we provide a motion, just as is happening right now, we need to refer it back to a criteria, is that correct? A condition? It needs to be referred back to.
If you're proposing conditions, you should be tying it back to a site review criteria.
A specific criteria, okay. Did you write mine up? Did you send the whole number?
Yep.
I can work with that.
Okay, Amanda, I've sent you a slight modification, and I might need some help from Christine to cite the exact code sections.
For conditions like this, as long as you guys put on the record what exactly, what site criteria you're looking at, I can work with this, and I will be.
So I move that "in order to meet the access and circulation criteria in the site review, the plans shall be revised," thank you, Kurt, "to show wayfinding signage shall make it clear to pedestrians that the Tenth Street Corridor is not private property but a public pedestrian corridor."
Proposed friendly amendment?
A little too many shells.
I think we're missing a "that" in there. "The plans shall be revised to show wayfinding signage, that shall make it clear."
I think that's fine. Accepted. Do I have a second?
Second.
May I speak to the motion just briefly?
Sure.
I think that we have had instances in the past where signage was either inadequate or confusing to delineate private property versus public access. And, you know, Mark, you talked about this extensively and eloquently with regard to the Millennium Project. We've had some issues with the proposed public, well, the supposed public rooftop deck on top of the Corita restaurant, or with the Corita restaurant, and I just want to avoid that. I want to make sure that pedestrians can quite clearly see, that's not just a hotel entrance, that's not part of the St. Julian, that is a pedestrian corridor to get to downtown.
All right, should we vote on it? Mason?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Yes. Can I have one friendly amendment to this? I just want to make sure that you all are okay with this being reviewed by staff, staff determining that that meets the public corridor, or that the signage is good enough, not good enough, but meets your intention, that you're saying here tonight. So I just wanted to add one little amendment to that, so "in order to meet the access circulation criteria, the plans shall be revised to show wayfinding signage shall make, that shall make clear protection intention." And then, maybe "as reviewed and approved by staff," just after that.
I'm totally fine with adding at the end, "as reviewed and approved by staff."
Or the city. Yeah, let's put the city.
By the city.
Who had a second on that? Was that Kurt?
It was Mark.
It was Mark? You're okay with that, too?
I agree.
Okay. All right, so with that intention, let's vote on it. Mason?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay. Next.
I have one more, and it might.
Oh, you're.
I have one more, and it might take some discussion and/or input from staff, but I'm going to go ahead and put it on the table, and I sent this to Amanda. So "in order to meet the site review criteria regarding open space will meet the needs of the anticipated residents, occupants, tenants, and visitors of the property, I move that the building include a public access rooftop deck of at least one quarter of the available fifth-floor area." And I hope that that's clear, that that means carving out the fifth floor rather than adding on top of the fifth floor.
So that is. Site design criteria.
Can you talk about what goal you're trying to accomplish would be helpful to understand?
Yeah, I mean, so we're taking the civic pad, which currently doesn't have anything on it, and filling it up with a building, which is the right of the property developer, right? And staff have talked about how you can't really add a lot of greenery or open space on top of that rooftop deck, because, you know, the roof, it's on top of a parking garage, right? You can't have trees, you can't have a lot of plantings and stuff. It doesn't really make sense to have open space on the ground level. But we often have open space on the top of the building, right? And so previous plans for this facility have talked about having a rooftop deck that could be accessed, you know, the same way that the meeting rooms are accessed. It could be, you know, part of a gala event, could be you go up to the rooftop and have drinks, or you go up to the rooftop and there's music. There could be food service there if the hotel wants to provide it, or if a caterer wants to provide it. But it, and it also honors the idea of having public access views from this part of the site. So I really appreciate all the open space that the St. Julian provides, but I do think that we could have more open space on this site by having a rooftop deck. I think it also helps to honor a little bit the concerns of the residents about the building being monolithic, and, you know, there are criteria in the downtown guidelines that talk about having varied roof lines and varied building heights. I don't think we need to bring the whole building down, but I think carving out a little rooftop space meets multiple needs in the plan, but especially the need for open space meeting the needs of the anticipated residents, occupants, tenants, and visitors.
So a question on that, because you had two different things in there. One is accessed by the public, and one is akin to how the civic space is used downstairs, which are different, right? Because the civic space is civic space, but it's also private and controlled versus public access. So is that your intention? Is it different kind of use, or are you looking to let them still privately control it, but have it as part of the civic space plan?
Well, so the previous agreement, when it talked about this rooftop deck, let me see if I can find the language. I have so many notes, so many notes. Oh, I don't know if I can find it quickly, but the, oh, it says, "The building will be designed, if deemed feasible, through the design process as to architectural constraints and commercial functionality, with an outdoor rooftop area that will be available for use by community members and visitors through rental of space by civic groups and not-for-profit organizations at a reduced rate, and exploration of circumstances when the space could be used for free." And that is from, I think, the twenty fifteen Letter of Intent, which is superseded by the twenty nineteen agreement. But I like that idea from that twenty fifteen Letter of Intent, that that space could be available for rent, and if feasible, could be made available to the public. I know we have, like I said, that kind of failed experiment with the rooftop public access deck at Corita. I don't know if we have solved the challenges, but I would be interested in having that rooftop deck and then letting the city and the applicant work on whether it is for rent or just open public access, and how that gets worked out.
The applicant is trying to get your attention, if you want to let him.
I think we're going to talk this through, I mean, I realize that it impacts the design of the building.
If he's going to speak, he should speak into a mic.
Yeah, you can speak for one minute if you want to get up to the mic for clarification around this topic.
So for the rooftop deck was discussed at length in twenty sixteen, and the city actually, it was considered very seriously, and it wasn't deemed feasible because of public access and elevators and facilities on that floor and restrooms and everything else, it just, and the height, yeah, the elevator actually put it over that rooftop, but again, countless hours were spent to design charrettes with the city, and it just was not, Sam Seffa Fessa, I think, was the, was part of the planning at the time, and it just, there's more, there's much more to it than you might think. And in fact, the city took it so seriously that you might remember, they wanted to consider putting it on the ballot to amend the charter to allow the building a few more feet to be able to do the rooftop deck. And in fact, Mr. Tebow and I were in city offices in twenty sixteen, and Mr. Tebow objected to that, rightfully so, saying, you know, "We can't single out one building to create a waiver for rooftop when nobody else gets that waiver." So we all spent a lot of time on it, and if you'd like to say you want it to be considered again, or if things had changed, or something like that, but to actually make that a stipulation, it's just not doable in its form.
Thanks for your, thanks for your comments, appreciate that. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to ask staff, we have plenty of buildings that have rooftop decks that are up to the height limit. Is there some reason why this building, like physically, cannot have a rooftop deck?
Oh, it can have a rooftop deck, it's just going to require a redesign, and again, bringing, I think, some of the roof elements down. So, yeah, I think it's possible, but it's going to require some, back to the drawing board a little bit.
Yeah, I think what the applicant was talking about, when we're talking about infeasible, is exactly that, right? Putting an elevator up to the fifth floor, but what you're talking about is quite a bit different, but it does require, you know, some reconcepting.
Yeah, I mean, I'll acknowledge, I don't know the exact specifics of this building, and I don't know whether there's some kind of, like, elevation due to the garage being elevated for flood control reasons that we might have fixed with our recent allowance for height modifications due to, you know, the building being elevated for flood. I don't know if that would have fixed this, like, one or two-foot problem that the applicant's talking about.
I think it works against them ultimately, but, you know, again, I think we'd have to figure that out in the design, if it were the will of the board.
Okay, thank you.
ML?
So Laura, I'm going to speak to this. I really appreciate what you're trying to do. I think, let's try to get a real civic use happening here, so, and I do not see it as a structural issue or anything. The fifth floor is already there, there's probably already plumbing up there, so there could be a bathroom. And I think if it was thought through in the spirit of a public use, it could even start to happen back in that area, to even pull the building away so that the people in the apartments in that, you know, closed building would have some breathing room up at that floor. I think it could create a win-win. I'm really supporting the concept of it. Yes, it will be a rethink and a redesign, but, you know, I think it's very clear from the beginning that this project, the civic component of it, was really not the driving force. That's not why this building is getting built. It does not, you know, you look at the elevations, it doesn't stand out, ooh, there's a cool place for public to go. Nothing about it is deferring to it being a civic-minded building that is going to attract people and do all the things that, you know, all the things that we wanted it to do. So I think to try to get something somewhere that could create a win-win, I like what you're suggesting, and I don't, I don't think that it would be a structural problem, and certainly, as Charles said, you know, if it's already, it's already an elevator going to the fifth floor, it's not going to impinge on any additional height issues. I will support this, because I do think we've got to find a way for this project to give something to the community.
Was that a second, ML?
Were you looking for a second? Sure.
I think I need one. Thank you, ML.
Other points of discussion that anyone wants to make?
Yeah, I'm not going to support this. As much as I like rooftop decks, as much as I like community open space, I think that when the planning board gets into conditioning things with major design changes, and I think this is a major design change, that I don't find it grounded in a deficiency in the code. I don't see the project as designed to be deeply deficient in the code. I can't point to a section of the code that says, wow, they're missing the rooftop deck portion in nine dash two dash fourteen I three. So I think it's too late for this sort of thing, and because of that, I will be the no vote.
Claudia?
I concur with Mark's analysis of this. Again, a big fan of public spaces and rooftop decks. This is extremely late in a design process to introduce that kind of amendment, and I also think that the site as a whole, having gone through review, is meeting the open space requirements in our site review code, and furthermore, the twenty nineteen agreement with the city does also anticipate those three stories, and I think we do have some responsibility to respect that.
Other thoughts?
Could the amendment be adjusted to remove "shall" in order for exploration to see if this is feasible? No?
Yeah, that wouldn't really be effective as a condition. I mean, you can advise them to continue to explore that with staff, but I don't know that we'd want to put it in a condition.
Got it.
Could you, Laura, could you help me think through what, what part of the site review criteria this would support, and is your justification? That would be helpful.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the site review criteria, oh, nine dash two dash fourteen H two B, open space, thank you, Christie, and it says, "The open space will meet the needs of the anticipated residents, occupants, tenants, and visitors of the property." In mixed use, well, this isn't a mixed-use project. So this is kind of a judgment call. Does the open space that is provided with the project meet the needs of the anticipated residents, occupants, tenants, and visitors of the property? And, you know, in my judgment, adding this building with no new open space does not meet the anticipated needs of residents, occupants, tenants, and visitors of the property.
Can I ask a question of staff? When we are evaluating the site review criteria and we're talking about the site, the site here is the full site of St. Julian, it's not just the project, right? Okay, in that case, I do not feel that, I feel that we are meeting, that the proposed project meets the site review criteria in this regard.
Well, here's a question, because I think it's really, it's super interesting, because the question is, because we have the civic space, the civic space, and the agreement in the civic space is for use of that civic space, where is the open space for that civic space?
In the, I think that question got asked, and in the applicant's statement, they say that it's basically the entrance to the building, that people could gather there, but they don't really describe, I can't imagine people just gathering outside the entrance to the building with their drinks or whatever, and, you know, mingling at a gala event, like at an art exhibit, or, like, that's not a lot of open space for people who are attending some kind of community function in this building.
But my understanding, can I, my understanding is, we need to evaluate the building as a whole, and that includes that, all that area on the south and southwest of the existing St. Julian, which is a very large courtyard and sort of patio area, and that, to me, that's what I'm thinking of when I say, I feel that the current building meets.
But what I talked about, the occupants of the building, to what Laura brought up, I guess the question is, those occupants are going to get, those non-for-profits, et cetera, are going to get discounted space to operate in, but where is their access to open space? Because there might be open space on the property, but the occupants of that civic space are not guaranteed. space are not guaranteed access to that open space for their use if it's not included somewhere in this property or in that agreement.
They are guaranteed access to the open space that already exists elsewhere on the site. It's one-site review. It's being this is an amendment, so it's being it's still considered one-site review. The whole site is still tied together, so they would still get the benefit of the access of any of the amenities and open space that are that are on the St. Julian property.
And just as a clarification, there are plenty of things in the site review, like TDM plans that are highly subjective. Open space is a numerical calculation, is it not? And it's objective.
It it's both objective and subjective. We have qualitative standards for what we consider open space and how it should be amenitized in order to be considered for the metric that's required in the code. So it's a little bittable.
So one of the things that I have been questioning is, how is the open space around this particular piece of the site? How is it being articulated so that the public knows you did that with your, you know, wayfinding? Or it's not a private area? Where do the people who are coming to this piece or even just walking through or looking for the civic component without going? It's not like it's just right adjacent next door. You've got to walk through and over and across to get to the open space that is assigned to the whole thing. So I I think there is a qualitative difference, and that is proximity. And and that's and that's something that I've been concerned with, and that's what my motion, if we ever got to get it out, it what my condition will be about, because I think it's about proximity. And that's why I appreciate the specificity of yours.
Go ahead.
I'll just say, so my profession is facilitator, and I have facilitated meetings that were held in hotels, in hotel conference space. And your people that you are meeting with, you know, they want to know, where do we go on the break? Where do we get our food? Where's our bathroom? Where's the place where we go to mingle during the breaks, right? And so it's harder to direct people to flow out onto shared open space with a hotel and with a restaurant and then get them back than it is to say, oh, we're going to go up to the rooftop deck, and we're going to have a half an hour to meet and mingle and have cocktails, and then we're going to come back to our meeting space, right? If you're doing a day-long event. So I personally appreciate your line of questioning, George, which is, how does the open space serve the people who are coming to event functions at this piece of the hotel, right? And so I can tell you what I would prefer as somebody going to a conference or going to an art exhibit or going to a dance event in terms of the usability of the open space on the site.
Shall we vote on it? Yes. Okay. Mason.
Before we vote, I I think we have some proposed amendments to this, just to make some specifics on what the rooftop deck looks like and what kind of space you all want or what amount of space you want to add to the rooftop top deck. I don't know. Charles went into.
Yeah, it's hard it's hard to know whether or not we should put a prescriptive metric in for how big the rooftop deck should be because we haven't studied it. There's a lot of mechanical going on up there between the mezzanine and then, you know, just the rooftop units that are there. So wanted to see if the board had any feelings about that or whether or not it should be something that's left a little bit less prescriptive for staff to work out with the applicant, which also gives me pause. So just wanted to see if the board had any direction on what you're thinking size-wise.
Alternatively, we could vote and determine whether conceptually this this meets a threshold of four affirmative votes. And then we can not, if it doesn't, then we can skip that debate.
Yeah, that works.
Can we just straw poll it so that we don't have to officially accept my amendment and then go back and revise it? Can we just straw poll whether there's support for this?
Yeah. Who's supportive? Two, three. So that's three.
Thank you for your efficiency, Mark.
All right, next next thing, I will say, I loved your your thought process. I was I was torn, but but I but I thought your thought process was really cool. Okay. Next.
So while she is typing it up, the amendment, the condition that I'm interested in making is, in order to meet the additional requirements for the height bonus, I well, there it comes. I'm I'm looking to have the space around this addition meet the requirements of the open space. And and it's got the criteria, the full criteria number, because at this point, it doesn't seem to meet them. There isn't any place for gathering. There's no place for benches. There's there isn't any development of the and really, the public space is that passage. There really isn't any public, how is the public going to use that area outside the building as their open space, rather than saying, my open space is over there at the hotel, and this is just a passage? I I think it needs to be inclusive of of human experience. So that's that's the intent.
What's your motion?
I will make the motion, motion to amend with the condition, well, okay, so my language isn't perfect, motion to amend with the condition, in order to meet additional requirements for how height bonus, that the plans be revised to show that the open space around the addition meets, and that's the criteria number.
And so is the intent to increase the amount of open space at the ground level or is it to better amenitize the open space that already exists out there? Okay, then I think we would need to get a little bit more specific, otherwise I wouldn't know how, as a staff person, I wouldn't know how to actually enforce this condition.
So the numbers four I to V two are pretty specific. They identify specific things such as seating and other design elements are integrated with the circulation pattern. We've got the southern exposure. Hard surfaces are paved with unit pavers, quarry tiles or so it gives some specifics, amenities such as seating tables, grills, planting shade.
And so you're okay with that entire menu of things?
Because right now, we saw nothing. We just saw big blank spaces. And I think that that is with the answer that the open space is already out there at the St. Julian existing site, I I think this site needs to have the same care and attention.
That helps. But I I think Christie has some language, though.
However, this is a site review amendment.
Right.
In total, it's a site review amendment. So so and and the way this reads now is that that the whether you amenitize it or increase it or decrease it, the open space, your motion ties it to the height bonus. My understanding is the height bonus may be the requirement, the requirements of the height bonus are met through one of three very specific things, and amenities in open space is not one of those things.
Yeah, so in this particular case, it's for the benefit of height modifications.
Okay.
Yeah, in this particular passage.
But but I have to I have to chime in. This is where is that right now, the motion just says that the plans have to be revised to show that you meet the criteria. Well, if it doesn't meet the criteria, then it doesn't, we can't approve it. So you have to be specific about how you think it is not currently meeting the criteria.
Well, I just did. Charles was okay with it.
Well, I'm okay with the menu of options because I understand it, but I think Laura's probably right.
Like, do you want to be specific and say, it must include seating? It must include pavers? It must include some kind of amenities such as grills, planting shade, horseshoe pits, playground equipment?
That that one there, number three, number six, number seven or number eight.
So the one you're talking about, the ones around seating, amenities, and trees?
That those are the specifics that the criteria that we have the authority over? Those are the criteria that we have the authority over? Now, there are some general ones under general open space, which would be, I could I could reference the general open space as well.
I don't. So would it worth, be it worth being specific, like like trees, seating, it's not going to have horseshoe pits or playgrounds?
Right, right, right.
The applicant's asking more, let me see something. Yeah, sorry.
I don't even have a second.
Do you, Mike, please? Thank you.
We are not able to put any kind of deck amenity or operable openings along canyon because of the high conveyance zone. So if we were to add open space on the west side of our building, we would have to decrease the size of the banquet facilities, which.
She's not discussing adding open space. I think you're talking about the open space that exists.
Correct. Okay, you are not asking for additional open space. No.
No, that's part of the drafting we're working on, too, is that anything that we do at the grade level has to be compliant with the flood regulations, just recognizing that there's a lot of constraints out there with high hazard and conveyance, and we can't cause a rise. I think there's very specific regulations about what you can put in there and how it can be installed, so we're going to have to craft some.
So so are we talking about adding amenities into the pedestrian corridor? And so ML?
It's pretty much the open space that has been assigned to the building.
So you're suggesting adding seating and trees and some kind of amenity into the pedestrian corridor?
Correct. So that it's not just a big underpass.
Yeah, one more, one more.
Just one more comment on that. Right now, we're supposed to have or maintain a size of a banquet hall for events for the civic space, and that space will have to get smaller than our sixty five hundred square feet.
Smaller, do what?
The the size of the banquet and the meeting spaces that we're providing for the city city civic use will have to decrease in size to accommodate this exterior additional area.
We're not suggesting adding more greater exterior. We're not suggesting that.
So is there some limitation around the width of the corridor that you're suggesting that if we added benches and trees, we would be decreasing the width of the corridor unacceptably?
If I may, there are some limitations on what they can put in the corridor, according to the easement, so.
There's there's ancillary, there's there's space to work with with. It's not just passage.
Yes, but there's certain obstructions that they will not be able to put in the corridor, so.
Correct, correct.
Additional benches that, yeah.
I understand. It's it that's the only open space that we have with this new project. And I guess my intent is that it has an experiential and a human and a public feel so that people will be invited to use it and to activate and to actually engage the site in a positive way, rather than, oh, I got to scurry through, you know, that it that it's a joyful experience. And again, in light of the fact that we are having, we're creating a civic opportunity here. So I don't, do I even have a second?
I think you're.
Or even a proper motion.
I would be supportive of a second if it was more specific. It's really, oh, sorry.
ML, I'd be supportive to second it, but if for me, it would have to be more specific, it would have to be very specific and also acknowledge that to 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 their point that the constraints, you know, to the extent that this can happen in the constraints of the floodplain, right?
So let me ask the staff this question, just let me, because I might not even need to make the motion if this, so Charles, in, as you see more detail on the project, will you be looking at that, especially the public access, that that access through the site? Will you be looking for it to meet these criteria anyway?
Well, they have to.
Is this a moot point?
They have to bring us plans that are consistent with what it is that they've got entitled through the site review process. So when they bring their plans, then we'll be reviewing them for consistency with what it is that you're seeing tonight.
So if we don't have.
And the conditions of approval that you guys put on it, obviously.
If we, so if we don't have a motion saying that, such as what I'm proposing, would staff be looking at that passage with the intent of it needs to meet open space criteria?
Well, I think we've made findings already tonight in the packet that indicate that we have found that it satisfies those criteria. And I think the, again, our rationale was really about the forty five thousand square feet of open space that, you know, exist in the courtyard further to the west.
Right.
You know, and then the the other spaces that are around the periphery of the kind of the main campus.
Right.
Of the St. Julian.
So, yeah, I I just want to make a comment. The applicant is in the hospitality business, and it is their goal to have customers and to have events and to make spaces welcoming and accessible. And the last time I had visited St. Julian, I think it's exemplary in terms of what they have done with their public spaces on the west, in in the interior spaces, and, you know, pretty much in every way, other than the civic pad, which is now just a concrete pad. And I I I think that this that staff has found that it meets the open space criteria objectively, and that the sub that the subjective quality, especially of trying to specify amenities in a high conveyance zone, in a flood zone with a with a narrow public right-of-way intersecting it. I I trust the applicant. I think that this is this is an example of where we've gone too too fine-grained in our process. And, you know, it's it's we're here to approve a an amendment to an existing site review. And I think this is too fine-grained, and I won't be supporting it.
Well, I don't think I have a second.
Well, if we don't, then let's go on.
Well, I think, so I heard George say he would second it if it was more specific.
Yeah, but I I think I think Mark Mark made it Mark made an excellent point, which is, I think his hospitality point is, so I I am supportive of what you just said. I think that's that's fine.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that the I've heard it again and again tonight, that the open space and all that amenity is over at the at the current St. Julian site. And so I really feel like this site, you know, is 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 not going to get much more upgraded than what it already is.
Do you want to see, is there a second?
So if there isn't a second, but that that that's the reason I'm I'm doing it.
Thank you.
Mason.
I don't want to waste any more time, never mind.
What? Oh, no, no, I'm not, I was just calling.
I I was, there's been a lot of talk about movement of people through this area and activating, and I don't know if everyone knows, but just across the the pedestrian pathway is a door, leads to a hallway, to more event space that takes you through to the green space, to the hotel, to the lobby and all that stuff. So I I think it's pretty, it works in my mind.
Right. Any other amendments? Being proposed.
I just want to clarify, so the amendment that I made about the rooftop deck, did we actually, we never actually voted on that. Charles had proposed maybe staff refining it. We took a straw poll. Is there something that we have to do to conclude that that motion?
Yes, I don't think.
You didn't have to withdraw. You didn't, yeah, you neither withdraw.
Withdraw or vote, right?
Right.
What do you want to do?
Is anybody inclined to change their vote potentially if if staff make any?
Laura, would you like to have it on the record, though, to have us vote on it on the record?
Well, staff were not comfortable with us voting on it the way that it was, and they wanted to potentially sharpen it up. Do we need to do that before we?
Well, if we vote on it the way it was and it fails, then your intention, your your intention's clear there. And so I I I think that might be. And so I, 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 I think that might be both the quickest and the best way to convey your atten- intention and, and to move on to other things.
So just go ahead and vote, is what you're saying, Mark?
Sure.
Sure, let's go ahead and vote.
Okay.
Should we reread it?
And ML had a second to do, right? Yeah.
So should we reread it, just so people are clear on what we're voting on?
Sure.
Um, Amanda, could you scroll back up to the one about the rooftop deck?
Yes, I'm sorry, I can't.
Oh.
I have it here, I just don't have it on the screen. I have it.
Did we get a new version?
No, we did not, because we, we did a straw poll and they stopped working on a reba- on a revision.
We stopped drafting.
Yeah, that's good, that's good, um.
All right, so we can circle back to that, um, are there other amendments that anyone wants to put out? Yeah. All right, so we'll just wait on that one. I'm sorry, we're, we're done with public comment.
Well, it's not a comment, it's actually a very important point.
I, I'm sorry, we, we just, we can't accept public comment in this period. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, back of the house acceleration. We have pedestrian care goes through the back of the house acceleration.
I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to cut you off, it's just not appropriate for us, it's, it's not fair to every, to the process, so thank you.
Okay, so where are we now, Mr. Chair?
We're, we're waiting for Laura's amendment to get up.
Okay.
It's, it's fantastic.
Okay.
I think that's all.
Let's get through this.
This project has to.
Yeah, let's get through it, 'cause we're not that far.
Laura, this is right.
Uh, yes. Okay, I'll read it. To meet the site review criteria regarding the open space will meet the needs of the anticipated residents, occupants, tenants and visitors of the property. I move that the building include a public access rooftop deck of at least one quarter of the available fifth floor area.
And I'll second that.
ML seconds, okay, great, uh, Mason.
Are we voting or discussing?
We're voting.
I. Will this hold? Or is this, is this appropriate to vote on?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
No. Yes.
Yes. No.
Yes.
No.
Okay.
No, that was four to three.
Yep.
That was, yeah. That carried, so wait, what just, somebody changed their vote from the straw poll.
Yeah, Mason did.
Okay, so do you understand that the, that the, that the motion that was made was, is not what staff would?
I think we need to amend it now, if staff want to amend it, if staff wanna propose some amendments.
We can amend it.
Now that it's all written up there.
So we need a motion to amend this amendment?
Yes, so maybe let's see what, what staff want us to amend about it.
All right, so, um, what we had brought up before the straw poll on this and deciding whether we wanted to go on down this track was, um, whether or not you all wanted to include a specific, um, area that had to be required, so square footage, percentage of building area, that kind of thing. We would recommend something like that, just for ease of, um, implementing it in the future.
Creating some kind of expectation, 'cause if you just say.
Because the mechanical, that kind of thing, we need to create some kind of expectation of what that will look like.
Yeah, and, I mean, that's why I said at least one quarter of the available fifth floor area. So if staff wanna suggest subtracting the mechanical needs from the available fifth floor area. Although, the mechanical is going up on top of the fifth floor. And this is about carving away part of the fifth floor, so it's not competing with the mechanical.
Well, unless the mechanical occupies.
Yeah, it's.
On the fifth floor.
If the. If the mechanical occupies more than three quarters of the top of the fifth floor, I think we've got a very strange building.
Do you have a different minimum that you'd, Char- Charles, that you'd be comfortable with? I mean, maybe, maybe one quarter is not the appropriate minimum in your head, maybe you have something. Yeah, 'cause one quarter is like around two thousand-ish square feet of open space. Which is quite a bit for a rooftop deck.
I, I'm open to proposed amendments if you wanna say like a one thousand square foot rooftop deck or what would be appropriate size of a rooftop deck to meet the needs of the people attending events in this conference center. Assuming that they rent the whole first floor.
A minimum of a thousand feet? I, I, I think I'd also wanna hear from the applicant just about whether or not off the top of their head, there's a, something that's guardrails that are feasible for them. I, I think if we don't put a number to it and we get twenty square feet, no one's gonna be happy with the condition being satisfied. Um, twenty-five hundred square feet probably seems like a lot, so maybe we'd be able to consult the applicant about what they think is feasible. Right, right now, you're talking about? I mean, is that? Yeah, I think before you. Okay. Continue crafting the condition. Do you all wanna speak to that?
Um, a thousand square feet would require us to have two means of egress, so we would need two stair access points as well as the elevator. That would cause everything to kinda come up. Um, we have a solar array also on the roof, so we might not be able to accommodate the full solar array size to meet energy code. Um, and then another concern is we would have to add transfer beams in the, in the parking garage, which would need to be coordinated with KJID to be able to accommodate that step in our floor slab. And that's all doable, but there's just a lot of additional parameters, so if we're looking at doing a rooftop deck, you wanna go less than, seven hundred square feet. We, you can't go more than seven hundred square feet, or else we need two stair cores to go up.
Okay, so how about a minimum of six hundred square feet? It's your, it's your, it's your motion, so.
Um.
Up to, up to seven hundred.
I, I would say, I would say a minimum of seven hundred square feet and then we're likely to get a seven hundred square foot rooftop deck. And I think if we go lower, then we're likely to get lower, so I would say a minimum of seven hundred square feet. So, uh, the building include a public access rooftop deck of at least seven hundred square feet.
Does your seven hundred square feet include the method of egress?
She wouldn't need, they wouldn't need two egresses if it's under. If it's less than.
I understand, but you still have to have one, so, um.
Well, I mean, they already have an elevator up to the fifth floor.
Okay.
So the, the idea is that the fourth floor, there's rooftop as part of, part of it, and then there's a fifth floor on the rest of the roof of the fourth floor, yeah.
I have a question. When it says public access, is it clear, I guess this is a question of staff, is it clear what that means?
No.
No.
And we haven't had great luck with the Carrillo rooftop at this point with enforcement and usability, so.
I would be comfortable using the language from the 2015 agreement that I quoted earlier, um, that talks about.
Yeah.
And I apologize, I don't have the page number here. But it, it's the 2015 letter of intent and it says, "The building will be designed, if deemed feasible, with an outdoor rooftop area that will be available for use by community members and visitors through rental of space by civic groups and not-for-profit organizations at a reduced rate and exploration of circumstances where the space could be used for free." So that's, that's the language that I would carry forward. Okay, so instead of saying public access, Amanda, can I, can I give you this language? How fast can you type?
Yeah, I got some language too, if you want me to just jump on in there.
Sure, Christine.
Okay, so what Amanda's typing right now is what I've been chatting to her. "In order to meet site review criteria regarding open space," um, and then I cite the section nine-two-fourteen H two B, "the applicant shall revise the building plans to include a rooftop, rooftop deck that is at least seven hundred square feet of an orientation and design acceptable to the city and accessible to the public under terms that are consistent with the 2019 agreement." Which is the agreement that incorporates the 2015 letter of intent that.
And who the user should be.
Oh, it incorporates.
Board member captain is.
Okay.
Yep.
I think that is an acceptable way to frame it, thank you, Christine. Very nicely done on the fly there.
Do you wanna make that motion to amend? Your.
Yes.
Amen?
So I will move to amend my previous motion regarding the rooftop deck to instead be staff's suggested language. "In order to meet the site review criteria regarding open space, nine dash two dash fourteen H two B, BRC nineteen eighty-one, the applicant shall revise the building plans to include a rooftop deck that is at least seven hundred square feet of an orientation and design acceptable to the city and accessible to the public under terms that are consistent with the 2019 agreement."
And I'll second that again.
Okay, um, shall we vote? Mason?
Yes.
Claudia?
I'd like to clarify what we're voting on, are we voting on amending what we, what we accepted or are we voting on supporting this as an amendment in its own right?
In its own right.
I believe we are voting on replacing the previous amendment with this language.
Again, I'm not entirely sure, I did not support the previous amendment, I would not like to support this as a standalone amendment, so what am I voting on?
Well, maybe you can clarify, I, my understanding is it's an amendment to the amendment we just did.
Correct.
Yeah.
So this clarifies something that is going to happen already according to the action that we have taken?
Yes.
Okay, then I will support this, yes.
I would just want clarification from you all. So when you all say rooftop deck, you mean the fourth floor, not the fifth floor? Okay.
Correct.
Uh, which is the top floor? Do you call it fifth?
No, it's, it's the, what, what it is, is that the.
It's not gonna be on the actual tippy-top roof.
It's not on the, it's not on the roof, it basically drops a level.
Drop down.
Does, do we need clarity in this? Well, it's gonna have to be consistent with the city's height regulations.
Yeah.
Right. So default, it will have to be, because it has to be consistent with that.
Yeah, I don't know whether to call it a rooftop deck or a patio.
Rooftop deck.
Rooftop deck is fine, but I just wanted to make that for the record, consistent, that you all don't mean the tippy-top of the building, but instead a floor down. Okay.
Do we need to clarify that in the amendment language, or you understand that from the record?
I don't feel like we do, because at, at the end of the day, it has to meet code, it has to be, yeah, it can't be over fifty-five feet, so. To me, that's implicit, but. All right, so this is amending the amendment that Laura put forward first, I'm, I'm just gonna restart the vote since we were doing a lot of clarification. Uh, Laura had made the motion, ML had seconded, Mason?
Yes.
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 I'm yes.
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 And yes.
Um, any other amendments that anyone would like to put forward? You'd like to put forward an amendment? I, 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 I don't, we, we've already, we've already kind of gone through comment period, so we're, we're not, we're not discussing anything in addition.
You're saying it's consistent with the 2019 agreement, but it's not, the 2019 agreement says first floor is civic, three floors are guest rooms, and then you're saying now it's gonna be three and a half floors of guest rooms and we can't separate the rooftop deck from the guest rooms on that fourth floor?
So, thank you for the clarification. I, I, my understanding of what you were saying, consistent with the nine, 2019 agreement, was around the use of the civic space? The users.
Correct, so it's, um, clarified that accessible to the public under terms that are consistent. So available to the users of the civic space, we can amend that.
Yeah, if we, if we wanna put the super-specific language in there about the, uh, visitors to the site, then yeah, we can do that. Is it, is it clear to, I mean, I guess the question is, is it clear to staff and is it clear on the record? I'm happy to make an additional. It's clear to staff who, um, what we're trying to do with this, what the intent is, and then, uh, who the rooftop access is, is meant to serve. So I think it's, I think it's clear.
It's for the users of the civic space, for the users of the hotel.
Yeah, and, and I'll just state for the record that you can have three, four floors of guest rooms and not all floors have the same amount of floor area, right? We have plenty of buildings where the top floor is reduced in size in order to have step backs and, and rooftop decks and that kind of thing. So it's still a third, it's still a fifth floor, it's just not as big as the others.
Okay, great, um, other amendments? Mark, your, your mic's on, I don't know if you. If not, we'll circle back to the main motion. Uh, and if, Amanda, you wouldn't mind cleaning that up?
Amanda, can we clean up the doc a little bit? Just for record's sake. So, condition one is fine. Condition two, I sent you a clarifying, that includes the correct language. Which I think you might have added below.
I think that paragraph was superseded by the one below it, so I think, um.
No, this is on the inclusionary housing fee, not the one below.
You're right.
It's the one that was changed. No. It's the, "In order to meet the site review criteria regarding open space." Or no, sorry, not open space. "In order to satisfy additional criteria for height bonus and land use intensity, the applicant shall pay the affordable housing portion of the capital facility impact fee according to section blah blah." Yeah. Okay, sorry. It's past my bedtime. Yeah, I keep on doing that, too, 'cause my hands are like sweaty. That's fine, it's clear enough. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that one's good. Yeah, and then we just voted on the amendment to the one that's above staff's suggestion.
So we're deleting.
So what's above staff's suggestion needs to be deleted.
Uh, just a point of clarification on that, I, I don't think you can actually delete that, because as Claudia pointed out, she did not, she did not vote to support the idea of a rooftop deck, but she did vote to clean up the language as staff suggested. So I think we need to keep that one and say that one passed by four to three, same with Mark and same with Kurt. That one passed four to three, and then cleaning up the language passed seven to zero, just as a cleanup.
The third sentence, it should, it should say that is at least seven hundred square feet, not that it, in the, in the bottom paragraph. Yeah, that should be an is. That is at least seven hundred square feet.
We could always do the cleanup later as far as what that looks like.
So who was the original motion maker and the original second on this?
Now we're at the beginning.
I didn't.
I made the original motion for the, yeah.
There any discussion before we vote? I, I will say, from my perspective, I struggle greatly with this because I heard the history and the community feedback. Unfortunately, we're not judging it on the agreement that was struck with city council because I don't think that's a very good deal for the city and the people in the city. But that's not the criteria that we're voting on it for. And so for that reason, I'm going to be supportive of it. But I do think, I, I do think that the changes in the amendments that we made are, are, are great. I would have liked to have gotten a better civic use. I do think that the, the height of a children's museum is way different than a height of a hotel. And just because that was approved doesn't mean that this should be approved at this height. But at the same time, we, I think we, there were some good compromises made tonight. So I just wanted to put that out there as feedback and also thank everyone out for coming out that was impassioned about this issue tonight. Other comments or?
I'll just say I agree with a lot of that. I, I, I certainly feel that the agreement made in twenty nineteen was not a great one. On the other hand, you know, we'd been trying for twenty years at that point to get a civic use, and we had failed, and so we probably got the best that we could, but it's still, it feels like, I thi, I think it was, it's problematic because expectations in the community had been set that this was going to be a really great civic space, and that didn't happen for various reasons that we don't have to go into. But I think that expectation has continued in the, in the community, and now we're ending up with something lesser. And so people feel like, oh, they're losing out. So, but there's a complicated history there.
My, my comments, actually, I, I wrote comments at length. I'm, I'm going to not go through them, but I, I will say this is a, a bolder project full of shoulda, woulda, coulda. And it's not dissimilar to CU South where, you know, the city had an opportunity to buy CU South, and we didn't. This space, I, I think people have had a mistaken view that somehow the city owns this. We've, we've, we haven't. And, and we haven't owned it from the beginning. And that somehow the, the terminology of civic space is broad enough that everyone has a fantasy in their mind of what it is that, that this might be. And at the same time, our job is to, you know, administer and adjudicate on a code and a law. And, you know, I, I think we've done that pretty well tonight. But, you know, we, we don't, we are not given the world we wish for. We're given the world that we have, and we're given the law and the code we have. And I think that this project fits within the code and deserves a site approval.
Just really briefly, I agree with everything that my colleagues have just said, and I want to say that this idea that discounting meeting rooms qualifies as a civic benefit is probably not something that I would have supported if I were being asked to vote on the twenty nineteen agreement, but we're not. That's not what we're being asked for. But I do think we need to keep an eye on that because it looks like people may be proposing that as an alternative benefit, which is something that planning board deals with. So I would really strongly encourage us to actively monitor how much is this civic space getting used? What, you know, what rates are being charged? Like, how is the community benefiting from this space over time to see whether this is a deal that we would ever strike again?
So I just, I just want to say that I think it was brought up that the St. Julian is really an asset to our city and a class act, and I absolutely concur with that. And I really hope that the public space around this addition is given the same level of attention and beauty that the current hotel has because I think that that would be a real asset to the community and a great gesture. And I know you guys can do it because you've already done it with the main hotel. So, thank you for, for having that space already available, and let's just carry it forward into this one. Thank you.
Okay, any other?
I agree with everything that's been said, and I do think if those expectations hadn't been set, this would be a completely different meeting where we'd be talking about the community benefit of having event space, having a more activated area, having, you know, beautiful frontage, et cetera, et cetera. So I do appreciate everyone working together here for, for the best possible solution.
Great. It's a great note. Shall we vote on this one? Mason?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So that motion passes unanimously with all the amendments attached to it that we voted through. Anything else that we need to do on this public hearing item before it closes out? Okay, great. Thanks again for everyone's participation on this, and thank you also to the St. Julian. It does get lost in this process that I think probably everyone on this has been there, enjoyed it, and, and does believe it is one of the living rooms, if not the living room in our community for a lot of things that happen downtown. So thank you. All right. We didn't vote on this earlier. It is eleven forty. It kind of got away from us a little bit. So we have some matters items. We have an information item, and then we have the matters item for review for Area Three and Planning Reserve. The informational item, is that a discussion at all, or that was just?
Yeah, I was going to speak to both items real quickly. So thanks for your patience this evening, and thank you to the staff who've waited on these two matters item. Mark Garcia is here to answer questions. He can certainly speak for himself, too. On the, the first item, but we really did intend that as an item for questions. On the second item regarding Area Three, we do have prepared for you a fifteen to twenty minute presentation, but we've got a deal for you, so I'll let an alternative proposal, although we do need a decision on that tonight because of some timing things associated with council. So as Christopher Johnson gets in here, he can speak to that. And I'll just see if, Mark, if you want to come up here and see if we have any questions on that first item for them. Thank you both. Great job.
Thanks, Shannon. Thanks, Charles.
Thank you.
And Mark doesn't have a presentation, so just if you do have any questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Laura.
So thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for the information item in the packet about the narrow trenching. Very informative. I learned a ton. I did want to ask about that email that we got from Alexi Davis Davies on, from Community Cycles, who was concerned about the safety implications for cyclists of having bicycle lanes that are greater than three feet in width would not have to be resurfaced after this narrow trenching. Does staff have any kind of response to that concern?
Yeah, definitely. We, we did take a look at various factors when it came down to that decision. And I actually do have a follow-up meeting with Alexi on Thursday to really iron out some of the decision and, and pretty much the facts behind the, the, the call to make that three-foot or less requirement into the DCS. So there's a, there's a few different, you know, overall reasons why we're going to pursue that option. One is it's actually less impactful to the community overall for the narrow trenching to be in an already existing seam. And there's some other details that we need to go through with Alexi directly just to make sure that that group understands that the overall remedy to restore the, that area is actually going to benefit that seam itself, actually making it more structurally sound than not having that, that little sliver of, of patch using a material called Mastic One. So there are some details we will be going through to make sure that those concerns are ironed out in full detail.
So if I'm riding my bike on a bike lane that has had this narrow trenching done, I don't have to worry about like my wheel getting like, like it happens with railroad tracks where your wheel gets aligned in the wrong way, and then you go flipping?
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, so just keep in mind that if they're, if they're away from the, what we call the lip, lip line or the edge of the, the curb and gutter, which is the area between the asphalt and the concrete curb itself, if they happen to have to place the narrow trench beyond that point, you know, again, specific to the, whatever the width of the bike lane is, that is going to require a mill and overlay. So when, whenever that does actually occur, we have our full discretion to determine what's going to happen in that bike lane. And also keep in mind, the measurement that wasn't specifically called out in Alexi's information was that, you know, the, the width of the bike lane is going to be measured from the inside edge of the, the striping to the, the edge of the concrete curb. It doesn't incur the, the pan. So that was another factor that we talked about today over the phone to kind of help clarify what that actually means for, for the dimension itself. So, yeah, we're hoping to get some more answers to Alexi by, on Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Of course.
So my question is, you know, what I saw when I was reading this was the cons, right? That it, it'll, it'll create less strong streets, right? They're more, more apt to need maintenance and repair, right? And so, given that our streets are kind of a mess already, I'm wondering, is this micro trenching only to be used where you can't do the direct trench? Where you can't do the, the deeper one? Are they, because you said that it works best, right? Where there's roots or existing utilities, or there are big rocks and things, so that's the benefit of the micro. Would the direct trenching, which doesn't bring with it the additional potential maintenance and damage to the streets, happen otherwise?
Yeah, so there's a couple of, you know, items I need to address. There's a few questions in there. So the Combin method right now is directional bore. And you've probably seen it around town, there, the very large boreways go through the bore pits and then ultimately go through our very rocky soil. Very costly to do, takes a lot of time, and very impactful overall. So narrow trenching, micro trenching, shallow trenching, all the same term, those actually end up just being another tool in the, in the, in a, in a tool belt, to speak. Another option to pursue if someone were to be looking to install COM lines. As far as, you know, the, the impact of our infrastructure that was taken into account as far as part of this, there, you know, at the end of the day, trying to minimize the impacts to our existing infrastructure was a big factor, and part of that was actually the, the, the direct lip line item that was in that, that packet calling out for, you know, the, the micro trench to be at the concrete lip line was the biggest factor to reduce the impact to the street. So that's where the, the call-out came from. We've, we looked at multiple municipalities and other jurisdictions to see what has, has been done, and quite frankly, what shouldn't be done. So we took a lot of those, those items and, and really tried to come to the best conclusion of what could be allowed without impacting our infrastructure more than what needs to be.
Of course, you did the due diligence. Thank you so much.
Of course.
That was my question.
Did you consider doing the micro trenching on the curb side of that lip line as opposed to on the asphalt side? So that, that would not then reduce the width of the, the usable width of the bike lane?
Yeah, that, that's always going to be one of the, the top priorities during the permit process is, is to actually determine the best location, not just what they're hoping to do. And we do that currently with, with all projects, including boring. Want making sure we're meeting separation requirements, making sure we're keeping our tree lawns clear for future plantings. And there are corridors that are available that are outside of the asphalt itself. And if they are available, then those should be the preferred methods.
Okay, but I'm talking about in the, the gutter pan.
Are you, you're actually talking in the actual gutter pan or actually the back of the curb?
Right, so, so three inches or whatever into the gutter pan as opposed to three inches into the asphalt?
Yeah, that actually creates a, a more significant issue when it comes down to the freeze-thaw, water penetration-related issue because there isn't actually a, a good material to, that, that's similar to Mastic One for, let me rephrase. Mastic One is the, is the material that we're, we're specking out, which is a C dot approved material to seal and, and, and protect our asphalt. At the end of the day, there is a similar product for mast, you know, it's Mastic One Gray that is used in concrete, but we're not approving concrete guts for, for narrow trenching. And.
You, either way, your, one edge of your trench is at the joint between the asphalt and the concrete, right? What you're proposing is one side of the Mastic is at the gutter pan. I guess I'm confirming that this is correct. One side is at the edge of the gutter pan, and the other side is three inches or however wide the micro trench is.
Yeah, one to three inches.
Well, sorry.
One to three inches.
One to three inches into the, into the asphalt, right? So it's, the Mastic is, is bridging between the asphalt and the concrete. If you cut instead one to three inches into the gutter pan, you'd still be bridging between the asphalt and the concrete. So my question is, did you consider that? That would, as I see it, that would not then result in a reduction in width of the, of the bike lane?
No, great question. Overall, the question did come up during our process with some of the internet service providers about cutting into concrete. It's really not an optimal option to be cutting into concrete itself. It requires a whole different blade. And then they pretty much actually don't make the blades to, to meet the, the width requirements in order to cut through asphalt in the timeframe that's needed to make this even worthwhile. So the cost effectiveness wouldn't be there to cut into, to concrete regardless.
Okay.
And it also causes some impact to our infrastructure because most of our curb and gutters do have some, some rebar and other materials within it. And, you know, depending on how the road was built, could be a significant impact to the structure integrity of the, of the concrete itself.
Okay. One other question. In the, the run-up to this project, Garrett Slater talked with me about possibly integrating some changes to the curb standards, and I'm not seeing that in here, and it may just be that that didn't, wasn't ready or whatever. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but I was just wondering about the status of that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with it. It was, it was a, you know, possible scenario to include this in, in this DCS update. It was actually considered or determined to, to push this to the next one, which will actually be late twenty, twenty-five into twenty-six to, you know, change and add some more DCS items for transportation-related purposes. So it's, it's coming, but it was not included on this one. At the end of the day, it was determined to just wait and, and, and again it on the next one.
Okay, so we won't see those for a year or more?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Anything else?
No, if you have any other questions or you're thinking of something beyond this, my, my email address is in that packet, so just reach out to me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
I heard there's a deal on the table. I heard there's a deal on the table.
There we go. Good evening, planning board. Christopher Johnson, comprehensive planning manager. So the item that we were going to present to you during matters this evening is on the Area Three Planning Reserve Urban Services Study. As we described in the memo, planning board's role of, at this point in the study is just to review the study. You take, you don't take any formal action or make any formal recommendation to city council. They have the, essentially the job or the authority to accept the Urban Services Study, which essentially means that they deem it to be complete. And then the process around the Area Three Planning Reserve would move forward. We believe that based on the fact that we have provided you the draft of the Urban Services Study, scheduled this item, you have the study itself in your packet. That essentially constitutes your opportunity for review. And so we would not be required to give you this presentation this evening, but you are welcome to review that and then reach out to staff with any questions or comments, ideally before the end of the day, Monday, because we are in the process of preparing our final memo for city council. That acceptance would occur at their November 7th meeting. And really the November 14th joint public hearing between yourselves and city council is really the opportunity to dig into the, the results of the study and more of a policy conversation of, are the two bodies interested in exploring the next step surrounding the planning reserve, which would be to incorporate a community need study into the comprehensive plan update? So the, the deal on the table is that we are able and willing to give you the presentation tonight, but it is not required to consider your review complete.
So I just have a question around that. So you need, if it's wanted, feedback from, questions and feedback prior to or on end of day Monday next week, is that correct?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay. And so the only challenge that I see, and I'll let other people chime in, is that we don't have the benefit of each other's comments while we're in here. Now procedurally, if we wanted to email comments to you all and copy the planning board so they can, well, so they can, wait one second, so they can see the comments, as long as no one responds to them, does that count as a serial meeting? Directly? I don't think so.
Not directly. I don't love it though. Because if one of you responds back, okay, we automatically have an open meeting that was not noticed. So I, I try to keep that as closed as possible. And my other comment, you all aren't making a decision either. So it's not like something that needs to be, you know, public needs to be aware of it and all of that, but.
You know, as a compromise, and we've done this before, if you just send them to Christopher, Sarah, whatever designated, we can make sure that they are then collated in a space that you can see them.
Okay.
We've done that before.
I think that would be better.
Okay. Laura?
Can I make another request?
Yes, of course.
I love staff presentations, but I don't want to stay past midnight to see one. Can I suggest that maybe tomorrow at your desk, you record your presentation and then send us a link to view it so that we can have you walk us through it the way that you would have in a presentation to just to help us kind of grok everything?
I think we can do that. At a bare minimum, we can share, we can share a PDF of the, of the presentation itself. But yes, we will definitely look into doing a brief recording and finding a way to send you a link of that.
I would love to have a recording. Put it on the city's YouTube channel. Like, I think that would be totally appropriate.
All right, we'll figure that out.
Anybody else?
I guess I'm trying to figure out what is the most productive then? Probably not giving input at this time, just asking questions. And then asking, asking any questions that might have bearing on the input that we would give in the joint meeting with council. Is that a reasonable way to frame it?
Yeah, I think, I think that's, yeah, I think that's probably the right approach. You know, the comprehensive plan is clear in that it states planning board's role is to review the Urban Services Study, but it doesn't go beyond that. So it doesn't, you know, it doesn't describe exactly what review is constituted of or what that even, you know, what that would mean. So, you know, we, we presented this as an opportunity or an option to be considered a review and offer you the presentation and take questions and any feedback. And I think we would, just in the absence of doing that in a meeting, we are, we are willing to accept those directly to staff after you have a chance to review it.
Great, thank you.
Sounds like a deal.
Okay.
Thank you. And thanks for staying with us tonight. Any other matters or discussion items from the board or any of the staff that are present? Brad, anything else from you?
We'll just briefly mention the kickoff to the conference plan on Saturday. And those of you who could attend, that was wonderful. Those that couldn't, certainly we understand. And there'll be many other opportunities, but it was a smashing success, certainly from my estimation. And great appreciation to Christopher and the comprehensive team and many others because it was a team effort. I won't go into detail. There'll be a posting on the web and all that kind of stuff. But it was, it was fabulous and we are excited. We're, we're in the season now. But that's all I've got. Thank you.
Well, oh, Mark, it's almost, we got one minute before midnight.
Okay.
I don't know, are we going to make it?
Not tonight. I was going to ask for it tonight, but the next meeting, maybe under matters. Can you please give us an update of what's going on with parking and TDM holistic review slash working group, et cetera?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Just, I'm sorry, just really quick. I've noticed that we have not had many meeting minutes in the packet to review. And maybe not tonight, but at some point, if you could let us know, like, has something changed in terms of minutes being reviewed? Or we just have a big backlog?
We have a little bit of a backlog, but you are going to get some hopefully tomorrow morning from Thomas to review. And we're going to space them out through November and December to approve them all.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Midnight. You made it two seconds.